If I could have people take their seats, that would be appreciated. Let me call this joint meeting of the Board of Education and the Ad Hoc Committee on Operational Effectiveness to order. Currently, we have Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, Mrs. Trabucco, Mr. Kiley, Ms. Donnelly, and Mr. McKay.
And first, Ms. Pitco.
Whoop, I’m sorry. On the other side of the superintendent, Ms. Pitco. And I’ll ask the secretary to get them, who is board members and who are committee members in the minutes in terms of the order. I think we do expect at least one or two more, so they may join us in progress. If I’d ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a unique meeting, and so let me kind of go through the agenda, so that both the committee and the board will know how this night will progress. First, we’ll have a presentation from Malone and McBroom on the study that they were commissioned to do. I think they have the lion’s share of it done, but probably still have some work to do. Once they finish their entire presentation, and I would ask the committee members and board members to allow them to get through the whole presentation, and just make notes on the pages that you have with you, and then we’ll start a series of Q and A on the facts and to get clarification. I would ask you to kind of save the debate and the argument for committee meetings at a later date, and really, tonight’s meeting is to try and make sure both the board and the committee have the facts that they need and whatnot. To facilitate everybody having a chance and not having to keep swiveling my head to figure out who’s raised the hand, I’ll go down this side of the table and ask people, if you don’t have an immediate question that you want to ask, just say “pass,” and then, once we get down to the end of that table, I’ll come back here and go down the other side of the table, and that’ll be the first round. And then, if we have additional questions that people ask, we’ll do another round. I would only also ask, if you could take only about five minutes in the first round, when it’s your turn, so that we don’t have 30 minutes at one committee member, and then the rest of the committee members don’t have time or don’t have questions because you’ve stolen all the questions. We will keep our consultants here as long as people still have fact and clarification questions to ask. Once the presentation is done, the general discussion is really a twofold discussion. One, as you’ll see in front of you, a color copy sheet, which is the ideas that were surfaced in brainstorming at the last meeting of the committee, ideas that were on the Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 discussion last May, and ideas that were submitted by a member of our administration, I don’t know where they worked, not in the central office, that they thought should be considered. That essentially forms what’s here. If your idea did not make it on this page, it’s simply because we overlooked it. And so, as we go through the discussion, please bring that up, and if you think the very quick statement that is on here does not do the issue that you brought up justice, then clarify that as well. And when we get to that, I’ll make a couple of other comments. At the last meeting, I indicated that committee members may have a question as to their, the ground rules, or the roles and responsibility of the committee, and rather than just having the chair answer that question, tonight would be a time for committee members to ask whatever question they have about their role and responsibility, and let other board members respond. And of course, board members would be free to be, talk about their concept of the committee’s roles and responsibilities. And so then, written communication, I would bring to your attention that at your table is a screenshot of a webpage that we have set up that allows citizens to go onto the web and make a comment about the committee’s work. The intent is to take that and any emails that come in to the central office, and duplicate them in some fashion for the committee’s review. If there’s only a few each meeting, well, then we can copy the whole thing. If there are a lot of conversations, well, then the committee, I think, will have to assume that instead of giving, given 500 emails or screenshots, that we’ll find some way to summarize what the, what the issues were that were captured on the webpage. And if we do a summary, and there’s any member of the committee that wanted to come in and say, “I want to look at every one,” well, then you would be free to come into the central office and just scroll through them if you wanted to do that. And so, we’re going to, I would suggest that the committee play that by ear a little bit, depending on the volume, but that will be up to the committee to decide. And that’s it. If there are any questions on how the meeting is going to progress, if not, I will ask Mr. Zubor and Mr. Gallagher from Malone and McBroom to walk us through the presentation. Now, I presume that you’re going to go up here, and so therefore, as generally tradition, board members try and go out to the audience, so that they’re not blinded by the light and can see the presentation. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
The budget manual is at your table as well, but this is the document, this is the document that they’ll be going through.
Hopefully, you can all see it pretty clearly in the audience. So, tonight’s agenda, we broke it up into two real main components. The first component will be covering the real baseline conditions. It’s the establishment of capacities in order to be able to do the scenario planning, as well as looking at the other side of the equation, which is really the current enrollment, as well as the enrollment trends and the projected future enrollment, to be able to ensure that there is a long-term viability for those various conceptual scenarios that Pat will cover a little later on. The first part of it is really getting into the elementary schools and being able to establish capacity, and being able to do it in a way that you can provide a baseline across all the schools. And, you know, this was a good time, and with the Holland Hill building project having gone through the development of an educational specification, which really is the roadmap and blueprint for how you’re going to design rooms, use spaces, physically configure the inside of the elementary schools, in order for Fairfield Public Schools to be able to deliver that educational mission and vision. So, we’ll start here, and really breaking the key components down of the various elementary spaces that are required for a school, and looking at Holland Hill, and that’s the long tradition 504 school, or the four-section-per-grade elementary school in Fairfield. There’s going to be 24 rooms for that dedicated to that type of grade-level homeroom instructional space. In addition to that, there are various support services that are necessary for an elementary school. Those are listed in the, in the table below that, and the ones that are highlighted in blue are those that are assumed to occupy full-size classrooms where they are available in the various schools. Next is looking at those educational spaces, or, you know, we’ll call those core instructional spaces. Those are the art, the music rooms, those are the computer rooms, if they’re not already integrated within the library or media center. Next is getting into the necessary space for special ed programming, as well as being able to have staff prep and staff work rooms. How those spaces are delivered really kind of differs, and we’re going to focus on Holland Hill, as this is part of a renovate project, so really being able to have the most, you know, modern vintage of a school, or being able to configure it as best as needed. Looking at what full-size classrooms were laid out for that, we’re looking at four kindergarten classrooms, there’s 20 grade-level classrooms, you know, four for each grade, a full-size classroom for math and science, one for music, one for art, and one for a computer lab, not tied into the media center. Then, looking at those other additional small spaces, this is really getting into sort of the evolution of classrooms, where there’s these much smaller spaces that are broken out for either small peer group time, prep time, one-on-one, or small instructional resource spaces, working with a school psychologist, a social worker, having those teacher or gifted rooms, as well as having the language specialist. So, those can be delivered through those smaller type of classrooms. Those aren’t the 800-square-foot classrooms that you would find typically in an elementary school, or the larger kindergarten classrooms. When we get into doing any kind of space inventory, and it’s always, it’s never an apples-to-apples comparison, buildings are built at different times, there’s different educational pedagogies, there’s different uses of space, there’s varying needs that change, you know, from the 60s through the 70s through the 80s, and then the 2000s. You can never have sort of that one-size-fits-all when you’re looking at spaces, and that, you know, each building is uniquely designed. It fits, it’s been fit over the years to adapt and change to whatever those changing needs are. So, we need to be able to use that Holland Hill EdSpec, or that most recent educational vision, as sort of the standard deployment for how we’re going to look at all those school facilities. When looking at the older facilities, you need to be really creative in how, you know, you’re envisioning those programs, especially trying to meet those smaller space needs. And last but not least, as we went through this inventory, we know that Fairfield has been working over the years to eliminate portable classrooms. The state classifies those as temporary spaces. We’ve noted where there are portable classrooms, but we’re not counting those towards the capacity as part of our analysis tonight. So, getting into the inventory, what we, what we have here listed is all of the elementary schools, as well as all those full-size instructional rooms in the first column on the left. Those are rooms that have historically been used for instructional spaces, those are rooms that, you know, are large, full-size classrooms. We recognize that across the different schools, they vary in sizes, but from our school facility planning work, they all basically meet the same requirements of being able to house, you know, 21 to 25 children throughout the course of a day.
I’ll just clarify, it’s the second column from the left, the total full-size instructional.
Yes, the second column from the left, thank you, Pat. The next column that we’re looking at in the middle is the total full-size instructional classrooms. These are where you would house your core K through 5th grades, noting that a school like Burr Elementary School has 24 of those, that’s your traditional 504, or four-section-per-grade school. We then have our other full-size classrooms, those include those other core spaces, they would be the art, music room, a computer lab, if it was not located and integrated within a media center. And then, we have various small spaces, that number changes between all of the different schools. These are where spaces have been divided over the years, where they may have partition walls, or full-size classrooms were broken up into some smaller spaces, or where we may have an instance where storage is being now used for, for an office or another function. So, we’ve tallied those up, realizing that according to the new educational specification, that some of these small spaces are very well-suited for delivering some of those support services. Then, we went ahead and took a look at exactly how the spaces are being utilized in the current year. We did the same exercise back when we looked at the school redistricting two years ago, it was an update to that. This really notes how many sections per grade you have in each of your given schools. So, the instructional rooms in use really reflect your staffing levels at those schools, which aligns with your student enrollment at those schools. We have the other category, which is our other instructional rooms there, and these are anything from, as we’ll talk about in a little later slide, those district-wide program. There’s a need for nine full-size classrooms to meet the district-wide needs. They’re not necessarily tied to a given elementary school, but, you know, some of them are strategically located in nature. Those also include other support spaces and resource rooms. And then, last but not least, the column in orange is those portable classrooms that we’ve inventoried. You’ll note that Mill Hill has five of those classrooms, and on the next slide, where we take a look at Mill Hill, you’ll see that those are critical to the operation of those facility. However, in our capacity analysis, we did not count those towards the capacity of the elementary system, or the individual elementary school buildings. I’m taking a look at Burr as being the most, one of the most current schools built in 2004, and comparing it to what would be required when you look at the Holland Hill EdSpec. This is probably the best example of one that most closely meets the educational specification for what an elementary school should have in it. There’s numerous small spaces, those yellow mustard-colored spaces coated along the left-hand side of the floor plan, that are housing all of the necessary support services. Modern educational needs and programming, many, many schools that have been constructed since the late 90s, early 2000s are built with these spaces in mind. Many of the schools of the older vintage don’t have these smaller focus group spaces. And then, looking in the blue, or we’re highlighting where all of those full-size classrooms are, these are used for grade-level instruction, as well as the core. And this is sort of the, a good example of aligning to what you’re currently trying to do for Holland Hill. The next, the next example is looking at one of the older schools in Dwight. What you’ll note on this floor plan is that there’s much fewer yellow mustard-colored spaces, so less of those small specifically-designed spaces for small group instruction, many more full-size classrooms. Many of those full-size classrooms then get used to deliver some of those programs that would typically require small spaces. You need to be able to leverage those full-size classrooms as well, in a manner where they’re not used as instructional space, but they’re used as smaller spaces in order to be able to deliver the program and meet what the EdSpec calls for. And last but not least, for an example, we’re looking at Mill Hill, built in 1955, there’s even fewer small spaces. The bulk of the school are those, what we would call the full-size classroom spaces, and these have a myriad of uses, from your grade-level education to your core instructional spaces, such as art, music, science, as well as some of your special ed and support spaces. One thing of note is that the five portables shaded in, shaded in burgundy at the top, those are necessary in order to be able to meet the educational mission for the school, noting that if those are pulled off online, the school would not meet the, would not meet what is called out as part of the most current EdSpec. We went ahead and took a look at the schools as a whole, and broke them up into three categories of, you know, those that are utilizing the small spaces in order to meet the EdSpec, really lever, they have them, and they’re leveraging them. Burr, McKinley, Norch, Stratfield, Riverfield, Roger Sherman, Stratfield, as well as the new Holland Hill, once completed. Those where there is some carving up, for lack of a better term, of some of the full-size classroom, to meet those support and special ed spaces, and those would be Dwight, Jennings, and Osborne Hill. And the last category is Mill Hill, where really the portable classrooms that are separate from the brick-and-mortar school are necessary in order to be able to meet the educational mission. Taking a look at just the Mill Hill construction project, before we really get into the rest of our analysis, you know, this is one of those things where, you know, we talked about having the portables, we talked about the portables being necessary to meet that educational mission. If those were removed, you go from a 378-student school, as we’ll see a little later on in the capacity, down to a 273, accounting for those deficiencies. A 378-student school is a three-section-per-grade school, whereas the 504 is a four-section. As you reduce it down to this 273, that’s really one of those tweeners, where it’s just a little over two sections per grade, and it’s important to note, on those type of schools from our experience, it’s very difficult to attain your class-size guidelines, especially when you have neighborhood-based elementary schools like you do here. The children just don’t compact as neatly as they should, when you only have two sections per grade, and you always end up with either classes that are teetering on the max, or sometimes classes that have a very low class size and very low efficiency. At a minimum, the construction project should be looked at to be able to address this, to get that up to about a 378-student school level, that three-section-per-grade, it’s a good operational level, and it fits in with where the space is really required to be able to have a level playing field, when we’re talking about the educational vision, really needing that, those five additional classrooms that are currently in portables, putting them back into a brick-and-mortar. And as we’ll see later on, in some of the options, as Pat walks us through, in order to have some greater flexibility and viability of some of those options, it could be a good target to be able to look at that 504 for the Mill Hill school, in order to provide some flexibility in some of the planning scenarios that we have. Taking a look at, aside from the core K5, as I’ll call it, what the needs are for those spaces, look at what the district programming needs are. Overall, across the elementary schools, there are, there are nine full-size classrooms that are dedicated to the delivery of CLC, pre-K, ECC, as well as the district behavioral needs. These are based on location and availability. However, the programs have been developed around it, and some of them are in a, are locationally-specific, in a desirable location, as well as they’re able to be able to get some synergy with the facility that they’re currently in, and it’s our understanding that, you know, it would be desirable if relocation of these could be avoided as part of this process. Looking at the loading levels overall, and this is what really drives the capacity analysis, we’ll see, for all K5 instructional rooms, we use 21 students per classroom to be able to establish our capacity for CLC. We used eight students. Pre-K is loaded at 18 students per half-day section, or 36 students, looking at two sections per day for an AM and a PM. And the ECC, similar type of format, loaded at 12 for a half-a-day and 24 for a full day. And last, looking at the district behavior needs, those classrooms are limited to 10 students per classroom. So, looking at capacity, first, we’re going to focus on just the theoretical capacity. And what this is, is this is the first part of the discussion I went through, really only looking at the K5 spaces. And looking at a school such as Burr, where you have 24 full-size instructional rooms, you know, that’s the typical 504 school. Looking at a school such as Dwight, where you have 21 full-size classrooms available, 18 would be used for instruction, that’s a three-section-per-grade, 378-student school. And you could see that same theme throughout. I’ll point out in Mill Hill, I touched on it earlier, it would be about, be a 378-student school. However, looking at the portables, and looking at the deficiencies there, we’ve made that, or we downgraded that to a 273-student school, leaving a total capacity for K5 education of just north of 5,000 seats across the, across the elementary district. Next, looking at the operational capacity, and that brings in the second part of the equation, really those district-wide programming needs, looking at, you know, where those nine full-size classrooms land. I think Burr is a good example, I won’t belabor it and go through all of them, but we looked at a 504-student school, with the addition of a CLC program, as well as a pre-K program in that school, that then drops our operational capacity down to 400 students. This operational capacity is really what we’ve used for all of our scenario planning, the theoretical capacity looks at maximums. This is looking at how you’re using the space, and takes into account those district-wide programming. Moving on to the middle school, some of the options, even though this is really largely focused on elementary school, some of the options that we’ve looked at and are going to present tonight involve moving a grade up into the middle school. We wanted to look at how those spaces were being utilized, taking a look at the architectural design capacities. We’ve established a building capacity, we went through and did our own room count, as well as an, as a utilization factor based on scheduling, and we came up with very similar numbers, just to have consistency with past efforts. We’re sticking with the architectural design capacity of what the buildings were built for, noting the 2017-18 enrollment of 2,458, and this enrollment is up a bit, about 150 from last year. There’s a rather large 6th grade bubble that has just moved into the middle school, I believe it’s about 837 or 840 6th graders have come up, a significant difference over last year, 6th grade have pushed those utilization numbers up for this year, up above 100% for the, for the middle schools. Taking a look at the existing enrollment, so the October 1st enrollment relative to that operational capacity that I just discussed, we went through school by school, noting that overall, your elementary schools are at about 87% capacity, and that this does take into account those operational deficiencies at Mill Hill. One of the ones to point out, or looking at Roger Sherman is up over 100%, that is going to be one of the key pieces that we do look at as part of our, as part of our scenario planning. And I will note that the Holland Hill is based on the, is based on the 504, assuming that, you know, the construction is already done, we know it’s in the process of design to be able to plug that number in. All the rest are a reflection of how the spaces are really being used today, lest the portable classrooms. When we go ahead, and we’ve done many of these utilization types analysis across, across the state of Connecticut, especially for schools that group by neighborhood, you know, which Fairfield does, we typically see the sweet spot of where schools effectively operate in that 80 to 90% range. If you’re a school system and have elementary schools that group by grade, such as those that are seen in Weston and Wilton, where you have a K2, and all the K1st and 2nd grade are housed in one building, you’re able to get a much higher percent utilization or operational efficiency there, in that you don’t have any of those odd splits where you’re up to the, up to the whim of the neighborhood demographics. We see those operating in the 90 to 95% range. So, you’re right in the middle of what we see, that sweet spot for the state of Connecticut. Looking at the, looking at the current enrollment relative to the state mandate for racial balance, one thing to note for this year is, you know, Holland Hill is at that 15% threshold. So, what this is, is this is a calculation of diversity, where each individual school is looked at with respect to the benchmark of like grades district-wide. So, what we’re comparing it against on the bottom column here, in blue, is looking at what the diversity is for, you know, all the K5 as a whole, and comparing the individual schools to that, who’s plus or minus. And the threshold is for an impending imbalance, 15%, and for an actual imbalance, 25%. We could see here that McKinley is at 28.4, so 3.4% higher than, than that 25% threshold. All of our scenarios, and tonight, we’re just presenting them based on the, based on the current enrollment. For those that are deemed viable, we’re going to go ahead and test those against the projections. Last year, we completed enrollment projections for the Board of Ed, and we established a long-term model and a trajectory for that, and that’s what we’ve been using to date to develop our scenarios. We are in the process of updating the enrollment projections with the district-wide number, but I wanted to just pause and take a look at those. As a demographer, we always look to have the benchmark of about 1% per year. Overall, we were able to achieve 0.7%. So, for a district of 9,750 students, you know, we were plus or minus, or plus 65 or minus 65 students overall for that. The elementary schools, we were within a half a percent for that, off by about 15 students, did pretty well across the board for the various grades. We did see a bump overall, up over what we had projected for the 2nd grade. Middle schools were within 15, and the high school was in 35, with a bump in 9th grade, as well as 12th grade. Looking ahead at what the long-term trajectory, we were just showing the next five years as part of that. The top table is just a report back on what your observed, or your actual enrollments have been. We’re right here in 1718, looking at the K5 at 4,220 students. Over the next several years, that’s projected to have a slow decline down to about 4,160 students in 2122. However, based on the model we ran last year for the projections, we’re seeing a slight uptick to occur in those next five years, where enrollment is projected to return and rise above what we had for a number in, in 2017 and 18, to about 4,300, about 10 years Taking a look at the middle school enrollment, noting that with the big, with the bump up this year in that 6th grade bubble class, as we’ll call it, an increase over where you were at over the last several years, equalling the number- you were at over the last several years, equalling the number, the enrollment number you were back at in '14-'15, we're seeing a slower decline here, going down to about 20, 230 students out to 21-'22. And then that number goes up and down over the next five years, as we're projecting, anywhere between 2,100 to 2,300, basically keeping the, keeping about the same level that you've, you've recently experienced, no dramatic changes there over the next several years. It's always good to take a step back and look at not only a larger time period, but also a little bit of a larger scale. And this is a good talking point, because it really takes a look at where we're at in Connecticut, going throughout this enrollment decline that's been widely talked about. We had a recent peak in 2004, 2005 statewide of about 577,000-odd students, and have since been declining overall as a state. But historically, you can kind of track that back, getting back into sort of the effects of the baby bust, getting back to the late 80s, where, you know, we were at an all-time low in the state of Connecticut of just over 460,000 students, to the baby boom period of the very early 1970s of 680 or 675,000 students. And it's important to sort of look at the period of those cycles, because there is a little pattern to it. And what we're seeing and what we're anticipating going forward is, even though that, the, even though that the, the rise that we experienced in the early 90s through the mid 2000s wasn't nearly as steep, and the fall was much more muted than the great fall that we had during the baby bust period, we're still seeing a slight decline going out about five more years. We're anticipating that, you know, the trough won't be nearly as low, it'll have a much higher floor than what we saw during the mid 90s. But overall, we're seeing in other communities throughout the state of Connecticut is that troughing has been occurring, and especially at the elementary level. So not to say we're out of the enrollment decline yet, but we are seeing, we are seeing some rebounding from it, and some definitely, some definite flattening of the loss at the elementary level.
Thanks, Mike. So now I'll get into some of the scenarios that we evaluated as part of this, and we'll start by going over our methodology and our assumptions. All the scenarios that are presented tonight were tested using your October 1, 2017 data, and that's because all of these scenarios required us to know the, the locations of students, so that when we drew our hypothetical boundaries, we could then calculate the number of students within those boundaries. And as Mike mentioned earlier, we can develop 10-year enrollment projections for up to two scenarios in order to test their long-term viability. We use the operational capacities, which take into consideration those district-wide programs when we're evaluating the utilization for the different schools and the different scenarios. And we also assume that all portables are taken offline, which is reflected in the operational capacity as well. We noted when CLC and pre-K classrooms, which are those district-wide programs, would need to be shifted between schools in the event that utilization was higher than the target, as well as identifying schools that could potentially house these programs based on utilization of space, and which schools had the most available space. And we also use the new Holland Hill capacity of 504 students, so you'll see that reflected through the tables. And finally, I'll, I'll kind of start us off by saying that these scenarios are not recommendations, but rather informational exercises meant to provide information on the feasibility of different scenarios, as well as quantify the impacts associated with each scenario. So we'd had two scenarios that we looked at at a high level and determined that these were not to be feasible. The first was whether 6th grade could be moved down to the elementary schools. When we did this at a district-wide level, all of your elementary schools would be over 100% utilization, and so we did not determine that to be feasible. We also tested whether Mill Hill could be closed, and this was a difficult school to close in that there's a lack of available space at the surrounding schools, and we were not able to find a solution that could allow that school to be closed without comprehensive redistricting and drawing, redrawing the lines of all of your elementary schools. There were several scenarios that we took a deeper dive on to determine whether or not they were feasible, and I'll run through each of these in detail, looking at some of the enrollment and utilization impacts, redistricting impacts, any impacts to racial balance, as well as the shifting of those district-wide programs. So the first two test whether or not you can close an elementary school, and we used Jennings and Dwight. Again, we determined Mill Hill was not feasible, in that it needed the comprehensive redistricting. Both these schools are two of your smaller schools at 378 students or three sections per grade. Section C, or Scenario C, looked at addressing the overcrowding at Roger Sherman through pocket redistricting. Racial, or racial balance was looked at in Scenario D, as well as Scenario E. Scenario D through pocket redistricting, excuse me, through school pairing, and Scenario E through pocket redistricting. And Scenario D also looked at potential cost savings associated with collapsing teams when you have a paired school model. And finally, Scenario F, looking at whether it's feasible to move students up, 5th grade up to the middle schools, to make it more feasible to close an elementary school. So we'll start with Scenario A, which tested whether or not Jennings could be closed. And for this scenario, Jennings students were redistricted to Burr, Stratfield, North Stratfield, and McKinley. And we also included a small pocket redistricting between McKinley and Holland Hill, in order to address racial balance and fill out the new Holland Hill school. So the map, and I'll use the laser pointer here to point out the areas and explain how it works. So the colors on the map represent the hypothetical district boundaries. And so we have Burr in the blue, we have North Stratfield in the slate color, Stratfield in the lime green, McKinley in orange, Holland Hill in red, Osborne Hill in kind of a light burgundy, Sherman in brown, Riverfield in pink, Mill Hill in a purple, and Dwight in a darker green, and Jennings will be in yellow in some of the other scenarios. And the areas that are highlighted in black were redistricted under the proposed scenario. And so you could see, highlighted in black is the Jennings district, as well as a small area of McKinley that was moved to Holland Hill. So taking a look at how enrollment would look under this scenario, based on your 2017, it would have, your district utilization would move up to 93.6%, up from about 87% today, so getting above kind of that comfort zone of 80% to 90%. We also see some changes at the individual school level, with Stratfield moving up to 100% of its operational capacity, as well as Burr approaching 100% of its operational capacity as well. Looking at racial balance, through the combination of moving students from Jennings into McKinley, as well as moving students from McKinley to Holland Hill, we were able to get McKinley under the 25% threshold. It did move up Holland Hill slightly to around 16%. However, when we have previously done work for the district, looking at long-term solutions to racial balance, we really saw kind of 20% as really that, that cutoff for determining a long-term sustainable solution for racial imbalance. So to summarize, Scenario A, we see this as a feasible option once the Holland Hill construction project is complete. There are, there are extra seats at the schools surrounding Jennings, and Jennings is centrally located and is relatively close to some of the surrounding elementary schools. And so it requires movement of fewer students compared to Dwight, which I'll, I'll get to next. It does address racial balance at McKinley, however, at 23.8% imbalance, we don't see this as a feasible long-term solution. This scenario does not address overcrowding at Sherman, and would redistrict approximately 7.4% of your elementary students. So because the operational capacity and utilization approached 100% at Stratfield, as well as Burr, there may need to be some shifting of district-wide programs in order for this option to work. In addition, Jennings has a CLC classroom that would need to be relocated. And the new Oz, the new Holland Hill, Osborne Hill and Riverfield had the lower utilizations out of the schools in this scenario, and could potentially house those. One of the impacts that we see with this scenario is with the middle school feeder pattern, in that all of the schools that receive Jennings students don't necessarily go to the same middle school, and so there may be some enrollment imbalances at the middle school caused by this scenario. And kind of tying back to the Mill Hill construction project, we see the district-wide utilization under this scenario over that 90% comfort zone, and so we see this as aligning with that larger 504-student school at Mill Hill, which would be four sections per grade, and gets you below that 90% threshold at a district-wide level. So Scenario B tested the closure of Dwight, and under this scenario, Dwight students were redistricted to Burr and Osborne Hill. However, those two schools did not have enough space to house all of the Dwight students, and so what we needed to do was several other domino redistricting moves, as we like to call it, in that, in order to free up space at the schools that need to receive the students, we need to do many small areas. So looking at this map, again, we have the black, which is the, which are the areas that moved, and we see Dwight here being split between Burr and Riverfield. However, Burr does not have enough capacity to handle all of these students from Dwight, and so therefore, we had to do a second redistricting, where we moved students from Burr to Osborne Hill, as well as North Stratfield. This then caused overcrowding at Osborne Hill, and so we had to do then a third redistricting, moving students from Osborne Hill into Holland Hill. So the redistricting impacts for this option are higher than Scenario A.
Yeah, and Pat, if I may, just to clarify, when he says the third redistricting, it's just the third area to be redistricted as part of the same process? If it were to go forward, it would all be done at the same time?
Thanks, Mike. So looking at the enrollment impacts for this scenario, again, so closing of both Jennings and Dwight would reduce your overall capacity by about 360 seats, and so we again see that operational capacity hovering at that 93.6%. We do see some different schools pop up with high utilization. We see Burr get over 100% utilization, and we, all those other pocket redistricting moves helped keep some of those other schools at that comfortable 80 to 90 or low 90s utilization. This scenario did not address racial balance. We did not incorporate any of the McKinley areas, and so racial balance remains unchanged under this scenario. So to cap off the, the impacts, Dwight students are further from neighboring schools, and therefore, we have to do many more of those smaller redistricting. The way that the map looks as well, if I may go back real quick, some of the areas that are redistricted, so for example, the southern end of Dwight would have very long travel times to go up to Burr, and so that's another thing to keep in mind when considering this scenario. If Mill Hill were expanded to a 504-student school, then this option may be more feasible, because then you'll have some excess seats at Mill Hill that could potentially house Dwight students as well. As mentioned before, this does not address racial balance at McKinley, nor does this address the overcrowding issues at Sherman. And the redistricting impacts would be higher than Scenario A, at just under 12% of your elementary school students. This would also require the shifting of some of those district-wide programs, including the CLC classroom at Dwight, as well as the pre-K and CLC classrooms at Burr. And North Stratfield, Osborne Hill, and Riverfield could be potential homes for these programs. And again, we have some potential impacts to the middle school feeder pattern, as the receiving schools for Dwight students don't all attend the same middle school, which may result in some imbalance. Again, this supports that larger 504 construction project to get that overall district utilization at the K5 level down to that 80 and 90% comfort zone. So switching gears a little bit with Scenario C, this was testing, this is probably the, one of the more immediate scenarios, in that it doesn't require a closing of a facility or a dramatic change in grade structure. And for this scenario, we tested a pocket redistricting between Sherman and Holland Hill. When Holland Hill is complete, it will have some extra seats that could be filled, and Sherman and Holland Hill are adjacent to one another, and so we thought of it as a logical step to test the pocket redistricting between those schools. Filling out Holland Hill will also ensure that you get back maximum dollars from the state for your grant reimbursement. So the area that we focused on is highlighted in black, and this is the area of the Sherman district that is northeast of Benson Road, which was redistricted to Holland Hill. And there are about, just under 100 K5 students in this area. So Sherman is highlighted with the red bar, and as you can see, this pocket redistricting gets their overall utilization down to about 80.7%, while Holland Hill will be filled out to 94.4%. This scenario does not address racial balance. It did not factor in any of the McKinley areas, and so racial balance remains unchanged from today. And so just to summarize the takeaways for this, we see this as a feasible option once the Holland Hill construction project is complete, and helps, you know, really with two goals, filling out the new Holland Hill school, as well as alleviating the overcrowding at Roger Sherman. This does not address racial imbalance at McKinley, and would have redistricting impact of just under 100 students, or 2.3% of your elementary students. Because so few students were redistricted, we see this as having minimal impacts on your middle school feeder pattern, and we also want to kind of keep in mind that this smaller pocket redistricting could be paired with some of the other scenarios that we're looking at. So you could have potentially a Scenario A with a small pocket redistricting, as shown in Scenario C, combined into one, one scenario. So without closing a school, your, the, the district-wide utilization would be, remain at 87%, and we see this as aligning with that smaller construction project at Mill Hill, remaining a three-section per grade school. All right, so Scenario D takes a look at school pairing to alleviate racial imbalance at McKinley, as well as opportunities to gain cost efficiencies by collapsing the number of teams, or the number of grade-level instruction classrooms at each school. And we tested this with Jennings. So Jennings, we decided would house K2, because it's a smaller school, and typically, your K, your kindergarten and first grade and second grade are smaller classes, and they get larger as students move in throughout the later elementary years. They are in close proximity to one another, as well as the building layout at Jennings supports that smaller space, or those lower grades. For kindergarten and first grade, you're, the state building code requires that those classrooms are either on the first floor with dedicated access and egress from the classrooms, or if they are on the second floor, they require separate exits for those students. And so Jennings is one-floor school aligned with, with that K2 configuration. However, Jennings is a much smaller school than McKinley, and it's a three-section per grade school, while McKinley is a four-section per grade school, which results in some inefficient use of space between the two schools. So I'll also point out that because the grade configuration has changed under this scenario, that will also change how the state calculates the racial balance law. So a K2 school would be compared to the K2 district average, not the K5 district average, and a 3-5 school will be compared to the 3-5 district average across all schools, not just the schools in that grade configuration. So if we look at the map here, essentially Jennings and McKinley would combine to form a single district, highlighted in black, with all kindergarten through second-grade students residing in this area, attending Jennings, and all grade 3 and 5 through 5 students attending McKinley. The redistricting impacts would be limited to, rather than geographic areas, be great. So students who, excuse me, let's say are in 3rd grade at Jennings, could, would switch to McKinley the following year, if implemented. So looking at enrollment, you can really start to see some of the, the utilization discrepancies between the two schools, due to their size discrepancies, with Jennings being at about 93% utilization, and McKinley only being at 75% utilization. From a racial balance standpoint, though, this gets McKinley well under that 20%. So compared to the K2 average, Jennings would be about 17% higher than the district average, and McKinley would be also about 17% higher than the 3-5 district average. And so we see this as a more sustainable, long-term solution to racial balance. So we see this, again, as a feasible option to achieve racial balance. Three schools would be in the impending category, but all would be under that 20% benchmark, which we see as kind of the, the benchmark for whether or not it can be a sustainable long-term solution. It would move about 370 students, or just under 9% of your K5 total. It would result in some low utilization at McKinley, because it's a larger building. However, this excess space could be used to house the early childhood center, or CLC programs from other schools, or other district-wide programs. This creates an additional transition for Jennings and McKinley students that wouldn't be felt at other elementary schools in the district, and so we see this as a, one of the negatives associated with this option. One of the biggest impacts to Scenario D is the impacts to the middle school feeder pattern. Jennings and McKinley currently attend different middle schools, and if they were combined into a 3-5 school at McKinley, you would have the students residing in the Jennings attendance zone go, in the Jennings section of the district, go to one middle school, and those in the McKinley section of the district going to another. And redrawing the middle school boundaries could have implications on racial balance at the middle school level as well. And the district-wide utilization, because we're keeping all the facilities open, aligns with that smaller construction project at Mill Hill. So as a spin on this option, we looked at a different grade configuration for the same school. So we kept Jennings- for the same school. So we kept Jennings and McKinley, except this time we did a pre-K to 1 configuration at Jennings and assumed that the early childhood center would transfer to Jennings from Fairfield Ward. This is about 130 pre-K students as of October 1st of this year. And grades II through V would go to McKinley. And what this does is it better, it narrows the gap in the size discrepancy between the buildings because McKinley will house more grades than the smaller Jennings. And again, this will change how racial balance is calculated with Jennings be compared to the pre-K through 1 district average and McKinley being compared to that grade II through V district average. So the map looks the same as scenario D with McKinley and Jennings essentially forming a combined district with the lower grades attending Jennings and the upper grades attending McKinley. So notice that this does increase the utilization at McKinley and it actually increases it to almost 100 percent. So it's something to keep in mind. For Jennings, utilization is at 97.3 percent. However, the early childhood center operates half-day programs and so the 130 students don't necessarily need to be in classrooms all day. Rather, it would be a morning session where you need four to five classrooms and a later session where you have four to five classrooms each used for half of the day. And again, this has some positive impacts to the racial imbalance with Jennings, which will house pre-K through 1, not being any racial imbalance status. It is out of the impending. It is below the 15 percent mark and McKinley being lowered slightly compared to just scenario D at 16.7 Takeaways for scenario D2, the ECC could move to Jennings under this scenario and this could allow the alternative high school to move into the former ECC space at Fairfield Ward, which could provide some cost savings to the district. This is a feasible option to achieve racial balance and all schools are under that 20 percent threshold for long-term feasibility. This moves 350 students or just over 8 percent of your K5 and one thing to note is that high utilization at McKinley at, at close to 100 percent. And so if there were to be, you know, a large second or third or fourth grade class, that could result in some class sizes that are higher than ideal. The CLC program would likely need to be relocated out of Jennings under this scenario to another school. And again, this creates an additional transition for just Jennings and McKinley students. And just like scenario D, this could have some major implications to the feeder pattern. If, if all students who attend Jennings-M Kinley were to go to the same middle school, then it would have to have a comprehensive redraw of those middle school feeder pattern lines or split up those students with the Jennings half going to one middle school and the McKinley half going to another. And this aligns with the smaller Mill Hill construction project at three sections per grade or 378 students. Scenario E looks at pocket redistricting and whether this could be used to improve racial balance at McKinley. Some of you folks may remember back in 2015 where we were hired to look at numerous scenarios to help achieve racial imbalance at McKinley and pocket redistricting was one of those scenarios. And so I was taking a fresh look, seeing if we could make any tweaks and seeing how that lines up with your enrollment for this school year. So this scenario has small pocket redistrictings between McKinley and Stratfield as well as McKinley and Holland Hill. And this also puts more students in the new Holland Hill school, but not so many that it couldn't be combined with a pocket redistricting of Sherman to help alleviate overcrowding. So there are a couple of redistricted areas that I'll call out on the map. The area in orange that is surrounded by the black line, that is an area of Holland Hill that would be sent to McKinley. The area in orange on the northern side of McKinley is currently in Stratfield. That will be redistricted from Stratfield to McKinley. And the southern section of the McKinley district, which is in red, would be sent to Holland Hill. From a capacity standpoint, this does a better job at filling out the new Holland Hill, although you'll see with an enrollment of 422 students, there still is some ample room to be combined perhaps with a smaller pocket redistricting from Roger Sherman. And it does not address racial balance at Sherman or the overcrowding at Mill Hill associated with removing the portable classrooms. So taking a look at the racial balance implications of this scenario, what it does is it really drives Holland Hill up to about 23 percent. While McKinley is lowered to about 20 percent, we're concerned that it's not a feasible solution because Holland Hill was moved up very close to that 25 percent threshold and could become imbalanced if it has changes to its demographics. So we see this as not a feasible long-term solution because we have two schools over 20 percent of the district racial imbalance. As I said earlier, this doesn't address overcrowding at Sherman but it could potentially be combined in some smaller fashion and it moves 183 students or just over 4 percent of your K5 total. And again, because this does not close the elementary facility aligns with that smaller construction project at Mill Hill. And finally, scenario F, which tested moving fifth grade up to the middle school. And we tested that before we got to the second part of whether it makes it more feasible to close an elementary school. And the map on the following page in black, unlike the previous maps, the black represents your middle school attendance zones rather than redistricted areas, just showing where the fifth grade would go to in each of these areas. So as part of our assessment of this option, we looked at the fifth grade, total fifth grade enrollment in each middle school attendance zone and evaluated how many classrooms would be needed. At Tomlinson, we estimated 11 classrooms, Fairfield Woods 13 classrooms, and Ludlow 13 classrooms. A significant number of classrooms at each of your middle schools and we'll show the, I guess, the enrollment table later. And ideally, you know, in addition to needing kind of those self-contained classrooms that align with your fifth grade instructional model now, these classrooms would ideally be blocked together in a certain wing of a building. So rather, you know, not just having 11 classrooms but having 11 classrooms in a solid block that could support that fifth grade curriculum. So as Mike showed a little earlier, currently at your 6-8 alignment, your middle schools are at capacity, in large part due to your large sixth grade class this year. If we were to move fifth grade into the middle schools, that would skyrocket your utilization at the middle schools to over 130 percent. In order for the fifth grade to feasibly move up into the middle school, the total enrollment in grades 5 through 8 would need to drop to about 2,400 students. And the lowest projected enrollment at the 5-8 grade cohort level is, based on last year's projections, is just over 2,900. So you're still 500 students away from that being feasible. And we don't see that as a realistic option in the short, at least in the next 10 years. So takeaways for scenario F, because of the large number of classrooms it requires, we don't see this as a feasible option based on your current as well as your projected middle school enrollments over the next 10 years. So to summarize all of this information, we have just a little matrix just highlighting some of the key takeaways for each scenario just to help you visualize some of the differences between them. And the bottom column highlights in green are the four options that were determined to be feasible based on that capacity and utilization analysis. And the ones in red, so scenario E, the McKinley pocket redistricting, and scenario F, moving the fifth grade up to the middle school, were determined not to be feasible based on your capacity and utilization. With that, we are wrapped and open for questions.
You could come back to the table?
I am, now this is so important, right about the bottom.
As soon as I saw your fill.
Yes.
So thank you very much for the information. To the committee and the board, at the last meeting, as we brainstormed different ideas that could be thought of, some members of the community communicated to us, it says, why are you talking about that? I have no doubt that even though Malone and McBroom have said, and here's an alternative, but it's not feasible, that we will get emails asking why we're looking at that. But that's what happens when you have a transparent, open government. Dr. Jones, do you have any comments that you want to make before we go into the Q and A?
No, I just, I think they did a great job just answering and giving us some factual information about numbers, which is what we asked them to do and kind of opened the door for them because they're experts in this, to tell us what we could and couldn't do. So, thank you.
Okay. As I mentioned at the beginning, I'll come, go down this side of the table and then I'll go down this side of the table and we'll just keep going through rounds until questions on fact and clarification of information. Both the committee and the board will be able to get into the, I'll say, the debatable side of whether we want to do that at the November and December meetings. But having said that, Mrs. Gerber, do you have any things that you wish to ask?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I guess one question, just to be clear, I know, and I know you stated, but I just want to kind of reiterate, this, all of the numbers that you've used are based on the students we have in our schools today. So obviously, nothing is going to happen today if anything is going to happen. So it would happen one, two, three years out. So obviously, some of these schools' populations can change depending, you know, different neighborhoods go through cycles where you have all elementary school kids, then they move on to middle and you might not have anyone for a few years. So, I mean, obviously, if you're looking for any kind of redistricting, you're going to be looking at places that border other elementary school districts. But how far in you go or how far out you go, obviously will change depending on what's going on. So the numbers could obviously change. And when you're talking about, I think there was one here, I made a note of, you had like 20 students from Stratfield to McKinley. I mean, that's a really small number anyway and obviously you could get, you know, you could get down to 10 depending on how the demographics of a neighborhood go. So obviously, that would change how these plans, I mean, if any of them were to come to fruition, they would obviously need to be changed based on what the enrollment at that time was, whatever the updated enrollment is. So just, I just want to make that clear just because I know someone's going to be looking at this map and saying, that's my street there. And obviously, first of all, it's nothing that's going to happen today or tomorrow, but second of all, things can change based on the populations of the individual schools.
Yeah, you are correct. It was really just to go through a test and develop some...
If I could ask you to speak into the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, if, if a redistricting were to happen six years from now or five years from now, we would recommend that you would look at the demographics at that time and see where the students are to best hit your target because they do move as families come in and come out. But overall, we're projecting for an elementary district, not the individual streets within the district.
Right.
Yeah, and we were just looking at, you know, what is the scale of movement? How much disruption would it cause? And where, where would the likely areas be if we did it today?
Okay. And then just one other question too. When you're talking about, you know, a lot of these plans involve McKinley Elementary School. And I know for some time now, the class sizes at McKinley have been slightly smaller than the class sizes at all of our other elementary schools. And I wasn't sure if you had factored that in to this or if, and especially I'm thinking like with the Jennings and McKinley, obviously. So then, would you have smaller class sizes at the Jennings K through 2 and the McKinley 3 through 5? Or would that still be like the, the more, the district-wide average, I guess?
Yeah, so the, the number that we use for McKinley, the, the operational capacity, was based on 21 students per grade. Now, we did look at McKinley's loading level this year, which I think is around 18 students per grade. So if you were to maintain that 18 students per grade, the capacity of McKinley would, would shrink based on that. And so for, like you mentioned, the McKinley and Jennings school pairing scenario was done, that 98 percent for McKinley under that one scenario was 98 percent assuming the loading level of 21 students per classroom.
Right. So it would even be higher if we were then looking at what we have right now. So it would be over 100 percent basically. Okay, thank you.
I think that's an important point for the committee to know. By board policy, the McKinley class size has always been two students less than the other elementary schools.
Guideline or policy?
Guideline.
Guideline, guideline, I'm sorry. Yes, guideline. Now, you're done. Mr. Patton.
On scenario C, and by the way, this is an incredible amount of work. Like Mrs. Gerber, I would have liked to have seen at least maybe one of the, of the, at least the better scenarios, the ones that are somewhat feasible, used with, with next year's, you know, projected numbers, just to kind of see, you know, how that would change from this year to next year when it would be actually a more, you know, feasible utilization. My question on scenario C is with the Roger Sherman pocket redistricting. So if Holland Hill goes to a 94 percent capacity and Sherman goes down to 80, 81 percent, it almost seems like that's overcompensated a bit. Was there, was that the only way the numbers really worked?
Yeah, so the, a lot of times when we're looking at pocket redistricting, we're looking at kind of logical boundaries of students and neighborhoods. And so the cutoff at Benson Road was kind of a natural boundary where there were a lot of students and Benson Road being kind of a stopping point. If, if we were to kind of break that down, you know, we can obviously do pocket redistrictings of any size and so that could be shrunken, but that could result in some separation of students who were within the same neighborhood. And I'll just point out too, and Mike mentioned this to me, we will be developing projections for up to two scenarios. So like you mentioned, you know, the enrollment in 2018, 19 may look different. And so if scenario C is one of the ones that the committee would like to see projections on, that could definitely be something that we can do.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Pat, one of the things too that we've learned is there's, you try to find a sweet spot, especially when you're doing just the pocket redistricting. You don't want to do too few students because you don't want a lot of singletons at individual grades moving forward. Sometimes it's a little better off and it's really the Board of Ed preference. You know, if you look at 100 students spread across roughly six grades there, you're talking about, you know, a dozen plus students that could potentially have some, you know, peers to move along with to the new school and that sometimes helps in transition planning. You know, if you were to just only target 20, 25 students, there's probably a good chance that you'll have a bunch of students that could be moving over singly. That may not be with some of their peer group or current classmates.
Okay. Just quickly to follow up on what you just said in terms of, you know, assuming that you would go ahead and the committee would choose roughly two scenarios, but some of the scenarios are, seem to be, you might combine, you know, one with another one. You know, scenario C doesn't obviously address the racial, you know, imbalance at McKinley. So you'd have to do C with, you know, A or B or, or whatever. Does that count as one or does that count as your two?
Well, that, that was our intent, is you would combine C with B or whatever number and then that would be a combined scenario that we would fully test out. We left it sort of a kit of parts where you could pick which pieces you want to combine for the next step.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Carnell.
Thank you for this. It's a lot to digest as we're sitting here. I would like to just hear a little explanation on Mill Hill. Because when you were going over Mill Hill, there was times you said you weren't including the, were including the portables and then there was times you said you weren't including the portables. And it was a little confusing to understand why and when they would be included and why and when they wouldn't be included.
Yeah, so we first mentioned the portables. I'm going back to the slide on the inventory.
Can you speak up a little?
Sure, I'm sorry. I need a taller mic than Mike. So, so on slide six is where we first introduced the idea of the portable classrooms. And we have Mill Hill. We note the five, however, we do not include these in the total full-size classrooms, which then feed into that operational and theoretical capacity calculation. So if we move on to slide 14 and 15, where we get into the actual capacities which were tested in the scenarios, none of those took into consideration the portables at Mill Hill. So really looking at, you know, the inventory, basically looking at where you are now, included the portable classrooms in the inventory, but in terms of operational capacity or where you want to be or where you want to plan for, they were not included.
Yeah, we basically, we look at them as a deficiency and then we just deduct them from what we know. They're currently being used to operate the school for, you know, there's various uses in them. But when you're looking at them from a pure facility programming and utilization standpoint, they really are temporary space, so we deduct them out.
Excuse me. Is that true of the other two portables? I believe there was one portable at one school and one portable at another.
So Osborne Hill's portable, I believe, is used for storage and so we didn't... So, Osborne Hills portable, I believe, is used for storage, and so we didn't use that as impacting the capacity number. And the same with Jennings, as Jennings, we found, was able to operate and hit that ed spec without its portable classrooms, and so therefore we didn't deduct it from the capacity.
Okay, and just a clarification. When you, when you presented to us last time, I believe, and, you know, we're going back a lot with a lot of drawings, there was something about that you, I believe, and I may be saying this incorrectly, so please correct me if I'm wrong, it was something about holding off on the possibility of redistricting until Mill Hill was renovated. I believe there was something like that.
Yeah, at the time, we had looked at, I believe it was before Holland Hill was actually in school design, it was right around that time where it was just about getting into architectural design. So, we treated both Mill Hill and Holland Hill the same, where we looked at what would happen if only one went ahead with renovation in addition to 504, and then we looked at if both of them did, and ran our redistricting options and utilization options off of that.
I remember, actually. So, back when we did this last time, this was part of the racial imbalance plan for the district. And basically, this combined, tested scenarios that could alleviate the pocket redistrict, or the racial imbalance at McKinley, excuse me. And the option that we found that worked was one which required comprehensive redistricting of students. But in order to get that to work, it required Mill Hill, as well as Holland Hill, being expanded to 504 student schools. And that was then, I believe, the preferred scenario that we presented to the State Department of Education. But that did not look at, you know, that assumed, I think, that the K-5 model and grade configuration would stay.
Thank, I think I'm more confused, but I understand what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carnell, if I could make a comment?
Please.
On your comment. Generally, this community has not been in favor of, quote, "pocket redistricting." But some of your scenarios suggest that if Mill Hill is not built out to 504, if we utilized pocket redistricting, we might be able to have more scenarios to look at. And so, I think that probably was also part of the, it wouldn't work unless we were to go to pocket redistricting, and we weren't in favor of that, if you will, at the time. Any other questions, Ms. Carnell?
Not right now, thanks.
Mr. Gerber.
Yeah, hi. First, I just want to make sure, I want to level set on the enrollment projections, because I've got a copy of something that you did for the town in February of 2016. And that went out to 25, 26, but, but first of all, just looking at 27, 28, 2017, 18, there was a projected number of 4176. And on this document, you're showing a projected number of 4220. So, I just want to make sure I'm comparing apples to oranges. There's a 59 child difference. I mean, we don't have to answer it right now, but, but that's something you need to understand.
Yeah, I'd like to see which one, because the one that we had...
It was for the racial imbalance project that you just did last year?
It was two years ago, I believe?
Yeah, that was two years ago. We were just comparing it to the projection update that we did last year. That was probably February 2015.
2016, February 2016.
Which is a year and a half, or almost, two years.
Yeah. But, but in this projection, you also went out to 25, 26, and then you showed a, you know, here we're showing the trough in 21, 22, but you're projecting that it goes up to almost 4,700 elementary school students, or PK through 5 by 25, 26. So, that, that shows the sort of the cycle going back up?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a note of how we're counting, if it's K-5, or if it's, what we're presenting tonight is just K-5, if that's including pre-K-2, that'll add about additional 150 or so students. Because we include pre-K in our projections as well. So, if that 4,700 number you're quoting includes the pre-K in there, that'll drive a difference from what we're talking about tonight as well, because tonight, we're only talking about K-5 number.
So, the 4220, does that include pre-K or not?
Oh, that, that's only K-5.
Well, that would mean that we were...
The 4220 on slide 20 that we presented includes only the, only K-5.
So, we had 4220 K-5, but we projected a year and a half ago, 4176, including pre-K?
No, no, 4176 excluding pre-K.
It says PK through 5, so...
Yeah, but the total may only be the K-5. If it's 4176, it's probably including only the K-5.
Okay.
So, can I suggest that our town has long history, and so they, they say, "Okay, what did you do?" How does this compare to a year ago, or two years ago, or even three years ago? And perhaps the two of you could kind of look at the immediate past one that Mr. Gerber is referring to, and provide some kind of a memo that helps bridge from one to the other, where the difference was.
Yeah, because these, these numbers with the, with the type of utilization and the type of, like when you're talking about pocket, pocket redistricting, these numbers can change a lot with just a small number of additional people. So, if, if we were 100 people more than you projected, depending on where that is, that could sort of blow up a pocket redistricting, I assume. And also, the, the increase to 4688 in this, which makes sense, because if you're hitting a trough in 21, 21, 22, and then sort of going back up a little bit, like you mentioned in your presentation, that would sort of, to me, indicate that whatever we do, we may end up having to open up a school again after that. And we've been through that in this town, unfortunately, where we closed the school and had to reopen it. So, because that, that's, that's a big difference. That's, you know, we're talking 400 people.
Yeah, without seeing directly what you're commenting on, it's hard for me to comment on it.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
But, but you want it back, correct?
Well, it's on, it's on our website.
Okay.
So, I guess my, my question, that, that's just excerpts from something that you provided on racial imbalance. But my, my question overall is the type of sensitivity analysis that you've done. How far out do you, if you're doing it as of today, I think, as Mrs. Gerber mentioned, that, it seems like you would have to do a redistricting sort of analysis that takes you out, you know, over some period of time, not just to the trough, but if you're talking about closing a school, you really need to go out much further than five years. You're going to have to go out, you know, 15, 20 years, because otherwise, we'll end up having to build capacity like, like we've done so many, you know, in the past.
Yeah, we've never gone out in the 15 years we've been doing redistricting, out 15, 20 years on individual school projections. I wouldn't even know how to do that. Typically, the most accurate projections that you could have for an individual elementary school are the first five years, and then anything after that, it's largely driven by some of the assumptions that are built into the projection model.
But as you mentioned, you're, you're projecting here in the trough. So, and, and you're also saying that we're going to start to come up off that trough.
Yeah, we're, we're seeing the trough happening, but you're, also, when you look at the enrollment numbers and you look at how much space you have in the system, there's also some leeway already built in there. We've done just, we've done probably five to eight redistricting a year over the last decade plus as a firm, and, you know, our methodology that we use to go ahead and identify a scenario and develop projections off of that, and fit it within the capacity of the school system, working for our various school districts, from the most urban to the most rural, has really worked out and, you know, has been able to prove to be able to provide viable options. I wouldn't necessarily look at the methodology and just say, "Well, how do you project that it can't happen, it should never be done," when, you know, there's a track record for us, as well as many other consultants that do redistricting, to be able to successfully go ahead and lay out scenarios for redistricting.
Well, I, I didn't mean this as, as, you know, question your credentials or credibility, but at all, at all.
I didn't take it that way.
Okay, okay.
I, I was just trying to let you know that there are ways and methodologies to be able to go ahead and have this exercise, and be able to lay out a plan while working with a lot of unknowns that govern enrollment in a town as such as Fairfield. Enrollment's driven by, you know, the economics of the region, the state, the nation, the housing market. All of those factors get sort of baked into how we develop these projections.
But, but in Connecticut, over the last 10 years, or, you know, nine years, every, most school districts have, have fallen, and ours has risen. So, we're not exactly a good example for, you know, the state. So, I guess, from a methodology sort of standpoint, wouldn't we want to have a sensitivity analysis on this, sort of that, that takes into consideration that your project, your, your plans are into a, the tail end of a trough, you know, going into a trough or just coming off a trough, that you would need to then consider what you said, is that this is cyclical. What happens, how many students, you know, if it's anything like you, you show on that, where you're going up to 4,700 by 25, what, what's, I mean, again, we have been here, it's been very, very expensive for this town. So, we would need to see, you know, that analysis. That might be the next step.
Yeah, and to answer your question a little further, I know Phil want to be sticking with the time. What we did back in 2015, and we typically do, is we'll prepare sets of projections for those options that a district wishes to move forward with, under different economic assumptions, and they could produce different sets of projections to truly test the viability of things like the economy radically change, or the housing market change, where, you know, we've had great success being able to do that, just to ensure that it's going to have long-term viability, because we are in uncertain economic times.
And, and I, I think I've used up my time, but I've got a bunch of questions.
No, no, we, we'll come back to you.
But the sixth grade, the sixth grade bump sort of worries me. Like, you get a bump out of, out of nowhere, or is that, I mean, normally when you, I mean, again, it's like sensitivity, it's sort of projecting for, with some cushion. I mean, can we explain the bump, or can we get, I mean, was it nine months after the Giants won the, you know? You know what I mean? Like, like, you know, it seems like you have to have, you know, some scenario analysis in order to factor in, you know, bumps. Otherwise, we're going to have, you know, problems.
Yeah, the bump was in fifth grade. It was just spread out amongst all your different fifth-grade elementary schools, all 11 schools. The bump was there from kindergarten and just grew as all your grades in Fairfield grow, because you have positive immigration throughout the year. So, the bump arrived as a larger kindergarten class and moved its way through. And just when you'd be able to hit the middle school where you have less grades grouped in less buildings, it becomes that much more noticeable when you look at the utilization. Whereas, when it's spread out across 11 elementary schools, it gets kind of muted in the individual school numbers.
If I can move on to Mr. DeWitt, but we'll come back to any committee member that has more questions. Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you. Oh, mine's not working.
It's fine.
How's that? All right. Two, two quick questions. You answered partially, answered one about the, I was expecting to see financial impacts with each of these. And I think you just said that if anyone wants to move forward a scenario, you do a financial impact. I think you need at least a rough order of magnitude on all of these before anyone can say these are going to move forward. Because the value proposition here, right, to, to rebus or whatever, if it costs $5 million, might not be worth this, you know, or what it costs to, you know, close a school. That was the first thing. My, my second procedural question is, how do you, how do you take a 504 ed spec and apply it to all the schools in Fairfield, where not of them, not all of them are 504 schools?
Yeah, we recognize that they're not all 504 schools. We also recognize that going through that visioning process that developed the ed spec with the, working with the architect, you know, though there was a process with the architect, the educators, the administrators, that this is probably the closest bit of information that there exists today for Fairfield Public Schools on how elementary school buildings should be planned, programmed, and designed. It would have been great going into this exercise if there was a individual or an ed spec for the various different sized buildings, but one didn't exist. So, we leveraged what we had for existing information. And we realized that each one is not going to be met exactly, but we tried to meet the core of this individual ed spec, those full-size classrooms, the core support spaces, and the majority of the small learning spaces.
So, so when you say on slide 10, "Schools where full-size classrooms are needed for support in special education," you're, you're quoting three school, or you're talking about three schools, Dwight Jennings and Osborne Hill. Neither of these are 504 schools. How, how are you, so, so your, your assumption is that we have to make these schools a 504 school to meet that requirement of full-size classrooms?
So, we would assume that Dwight Jennings, which are three, the three-section pre-grade school, would have fewer instructional spaces. So, they wouldn't have the 24 instructional classrooms, they'd have 18, but that they would have the same support spaces, art, music, math, science, and those small spaces for special education resource. So, essentially, it would be, going back to slide four, taking everything on the right-hand side, every, every kind of function housed in a small space, as well as on the full, under full-size classrooms, your 18 instructional classrooms for K through 5, math, music, art room, and computer lab.
So, is it correct to say that you scaled the ed spec from a 504 school down to a 365 school?
Only at the instructional classroom level.
Not on the support level.
Not at the support level. Okay.
Is that it, Mr. DeWitt?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Pitco?
First of all, I want to thank you. This is the first time we're seeing it, so there's a lot of information here. I'm sure I'd have a lot more questions. You say this is the current projections as of October 1st. We're going to, I'll give you the slide, D2 scenario, which starts on slide 49. You have the projections for the ECC currently at 130. The issue is the ECC grows as the year goes on, and we were given initial projections for the ECC this year at 190 ending. So, your scenario wouldn't work, because even next year, they're projected at more students. And you said that some right now are half-day, some are full-day. And there's no way for us to know, based on those student needs, who's going to be half-day and who's going to be full-day. So, that scenario just, it just doesn't work for me. The other thing, I spoke to Dr. Jones, I remember, in one of the Friday packets we got, by the year 2022, we have to come up with a plan, according to the state, to give pre-K to all students. That doesn't fit in these scenarios. And I know that you can't do that, because you did it based on October 1st, but there are so many other variables that I have as far as our town's needs, and, and town planning and zoning, and buildings that are going up right now. I just went to the town planning and zoning meeting, and my head was spinning just at that. To think that, that I can even look at these and, and say that this is going to work for us. There are so many other factors that go into it. I appreciate the work that you did, but if we can't possibly even look at these scenarios until Holland Hill is built and possibly Mill Hill, then we have to kind of do this again then. And...
Do you have a, do you have a comment on that assumption, or?
Yes, my only comment would be that for ECC, another option, rather than looking at, you know, number of students would be reserving a block of classrooms in whatever building that program would land, which may be a more flexible way. So, saying, you know, for Jennings, perhaps it's reserving six classrooms of the space for ECC, maybe kind of a more viable...
And I totally appreciate your response. The issue is the ECC is based on needs, and so their CLC versus their special ed classrooms, that changes all the time. The CLC classrooms right now that we currently have in our elementary schools, those are going to be projected to be more classrooms, and that doesn't fit into any of these scenarios. And I know that that's information you wouldn't have known, but for me to look at these scenarios and say that one's even feasible, there's so many other things that go into this. Once again, thank you. Like I said, if I have more time, I definitely will have more questions to give to you, but that's really it for now. but that's really it for now.
Mr. Asa.
Okay. I have a few. First off, do you mind me asking, how did you come up with these scenarios? Did somebody tell you, or is this from your experience? How did we get to these scenarios? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to just find the list of them.
Okay.
If I can speak to them.
I was just curious if this is from...
Fundamental question, I think, is, did these come out of your staff and your companies' look at it? Or did the district suggest, look at X, Y, or Z?
I think some of them were logical to look at, as in the schools that, can overcrowding at Roger Sherman being improved through pocket redistricting? That was a combination, sorry. That was, that was developed through a combination of not only looking at the enrollment, but as well as going through the capacity and utilization, seeing that it's over 100%, and trying to come up with a solution to be able to solve that problem. The same can be said for those that are looking at improving the racial balance. It's been a long-known issue, we had some history working on it. A large part of it stemmed from, you know, our experience working in the district, as well as sitting down and working with the district once we got started. We left it as a menu of options to be able to look at. We've provided some feedback of things that likely should be looked at, based on state mandates or capacity concerned, and we had a back-and-forth with the administration to fine-tune what would likely be addressed before we went ahead and did it.
Okay, so did someone from our district ask you to look at closing specific schools?
No, we actually came up with those based on the proximity, the size of the school, and whether or not we thought it would be a feasible scenario on, can the students be likely absorbed in neighboring schools, based on capacity?
So, that leads to my next question. Referencing Mr. Gerber's question, you mentioned in your experience, I think you said in the last eight years, correct me if I'm wrong, of doing redistricting, looking, or research. In those eight years, how many times have you suggested, as part of your proposal, closing schools? And how many districts have actually done that?
How many schools have we closed, are you asking?
No, in your proposals, like you're doing tonight, in the last eight years, using projections, and you talk about redistricting, how many times have you suggested scenarios where you're actually closing a physical plant, closing a structure? Or have you, put it that way, have you suggested that?
I'd probably say, especially since the, since the economic downturn in 2007, 2008, a large part of our work has involved, in our scope, to look at consolidation and look at ways to gain efficiencies, very dissimilar to what you're doing here today. It's been not, it's been a charge of many boards of ed, communities, and districts across the state, so it goes hand-in-hand with what we've been doing.
Okay, so you've been suggesting this others?
Not suggesting, there's been discussion...
So, were the first ones with scenarios that lay out closing schools, or?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay.
And to say, to say I go in a community and I suggest closing a school, I imagine in many communities, it's been a conversation around a bunch of times to be...
I apologize.
Yeah, I...
Rejecting scenarios. So, of the ones that you've worked with, how many, I'm just curious, have any of them actually implemented a scenario that included closing a school?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Quite a few.
Okay.
And they've gone through, with the consolidation plan successfully, I would be glad to provide you a list of those, board of ed members, superintendents, clients that we've worked with, to not only gain knowledge of how to go through that type of process, the pros and cons of it, but also to get a good understanding of some of the critical steps that you wouldn't see at a meeting like this.
Okay. And then, just with regards to some of the scenarios, you've basically said, "for" or "feasible," the word "feasible," or "to look at more," right? So, I guess my only concern, or one of my concerns, is looking at, let's say, A and B. Both of them are clearly having an issue of middle-school feeder patterns being disrupted, which I know has been, you know, a hot topic in the past. But also, both of them, to me, don't really address the racial imbalance issue. And that's a concern here, obviously with this committee, looking at operational effectiveness. But we also have a larger, you know, concern here in the room of this racial imbalance issue, and we're looking at your work to try and balance that. To me, A and B don't do that. C, put us at 28%, minimally impacting the feeder pattern, but it leaves us at 28% with McKinley. And then, with regards to D, I guess, when I see that at first glance, it's like, okay, that seems intriguing. I guess my concern would be, how do you do that to two out of 11 schools in a district? And make that work, where the rest of the schools all stay, K through 5, but you're only picking those two? So, I see that as being a potential problem. So, I guess I'm a little worried that, of all these scenarios, I wish I had seen one that really kind of addressed the racial imbalance more, and, because closing a school clearly doesn't solve that.
So, I would suggest that we're getting into the opinion as to whether this would make sense or not side, which is what the committee and the board will have to address. I would remind everybody that their document clearly says, "These are not recommendations, these are just facts and alternatives," and then the community gets to decide what to do with it.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at, we're going to have, I guess, two of these scenarios to go back and look at. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
One more. Jennifer, do you mind if, Mrs., okay, Mrs. Gerber?
No, I meant to mention this before, when it was my turn. This will all be posted on the website?
The doc, the, these pages will be posted on our website in two locations, the general board of ed location, but also underneath the ad hoc committee work. So, depending on whether you look for the ad hoc committee or the general, you'll find it in one of those two places. Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Thank you. First, to Mr. Gerber, I thought I'd point out that the Patriots won the Super Bowl in February of 2005, but that's, that's just an aside.
Thank you, Ms. Cannelly.
No problem. But, and also, as we mentioned, I don't know if anybody noticed that as Mr. Asa used the phrase "closing a school," I don't know if anybody heard the thunder that came down on that. I don't know if there was a message there as well, but of the divine. But, so, I have several questions. Well, first, as a statement, I would basically disagree with Mrs. Pitco's point that this is too early. I mean, that's the whole point of this ad hoc committee, is to start raising these questions. Obviously, we're not ready to make any final decisions yet. But without this information in hand, things which have been the subject of rumor, we now have statistics and facts and numbers to kind of form the conversation that our ad hoc committee is supposed to be taking to a whole other level. So, I don't know that, I mean, obviously, there's nothing in here that immediately, you know, suggests itself as, "That's great," and the solution. But the conversation has to take place. So, I do appreciate that. One very minor detail, in the, on the initial page, when you mentioned, very minor detail, Spanish office, was that including ELL, or was ELL not factored into this as having space requirements?
I'm not familiar enough with the district's deployment of resources to know whether that was meant for English language learners or not.
Okay. So, again, I know it would end up sharing space undoubtedly wherever it was, it just, it was noticeable to me that it wasn't even referenced here on the, I guess, your third slide.
I see our superintendent making a note that perhaps at the next committee meeting, she'll be able to comment on that question.
Okay, thank you. Next question. I would echo what Mr. DeWitt said, that in terms of, obviously, there's lots in here for the board to address, you know, whether, from the racial imbalance, et cetera, and that larger discussion, I'd hope to see more things with budget, clear budget impact. And the only one that was easily discernible was the one regarding the Walter Fitzgerald campus. And so, I don't know, and that one on our color chart, you know, comes with the clear 95,000 price tag there. But did you, I don't know if that's one you have, I'm talking about this one, which is not yours. But aside from that, did anything in the course of your running these scenarios immediately suggest itself to you as having budget implications, either of a savings nature or a cost nature? Because obviously, once you start looking at transportation, which I don't believe is your specialty or anything, but is there anything else that, where you can color the discussion with budget references?
No, we wouldn't be able to paint an accurate picture, there's so much involved in it. You know, what can be done is looked at, through the different scenarios, what the staffing implications could be, or is this probably the easiest number? But getting into operational costs of an individual facility, or transportation costs, and working in transportation costs for special ed and all of that, that's well beyond what the scope of what we were brought in to do, or our area of expertise, to be honest with you.
Okay, and that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was asked. Next question. Did, did it occur, or was it, did anything suggest itself as other scenarios regarding the Walter Fitzgerald campus, aside from relocating to the ECC, and obviously then the ECC moving elsewhere? Currently, that was just in D2, so I don't know if it was ever looked at as...
Yeah, so, we only looked at moving the ECC in scenario D2, you're correct. We could potentially take a look at some of the other scenarios, if you want to move forward with the two, for the projections of seeing, perhaps if there's space to accommodate that in another building as well.
Okay, well, then I'll leapfrog to my, what was going to be my last question, but when you reference that, now that you have all this raw data, if the ad hoc committee were to start really zeroing in on, this looks like an interesting scenario, again, I'm not positive how the ad hoc committee will move forward, how easy is it for you to, I mean, there's kind of a packaging of five or six slides of, you know, map, takeaways, impact, enrollment numbers, racial imbalance numbers? How easy is that now to do, now that you have raw data?
Yeah, we would be happy, as the, as the committee gets into further discussions, if they were to propose options, to be able to go ahead and look at the boundaries, plug it into our formulas, look at the implications of those, to be able to give a similar report back on what could be a custom scenario that we may not have looked at. We really intended today was to give you a bunch of different ones that can be combined to really start the discussion, knowing that, you know, you're newly formed as a committee, to get those sort of thoughts and conversation flowing on, you know, how do we get to that right fit for us?
Right, so that's my, that was my question, is that now with all of that kind of in place, it really is a matter of, okay, we can plug these in, and that's done with relative ease?
Yeah, fairly relative.
Because you're not having to go back to the sites or anything like that.
We could do it all from, you know, the office.
Okay. My next, I mean, obviously, just as a reminder...
You have another last question?
That was the last question, and now I took it out of order. Nice try. Look, I get some latitude thrown in the Patriots mentioned, so. Regarding the Mill Hill and the 504, I know that was something, this is more for the committee, I know that as an issue of trying to do that to 504, I know that that came up at the Board of Finance meeting, as realizing that that's not just a matter of expand, that there are some real site difficulties with that, just as a note to the ad hoc committee to keep in mind. But I was hoping, because I know, I've gotten this question in the past, and the gentleman from Lone McBroom might not be the ones to address it, we might need Mr. Cullen for this. But the whole issue of where we come up with that 21 time, you know, that 21 base number, because obviously, in terms of all the classroom size being 21, if there are 24 classrooms, that's where we get that 504 number. But in fact, of course, any school that went out to its, our guideline max of 23 for K through 2, and 25 for 3 through 5, we're looking at a very different enrollment number. And so, why we use just a baseline of 21 across all six grades, if we could have some background, especially for the public, on the basis of that selection? Through the chair to anyone who chooses to answer it.
If you're asking, where did the number 21 come from?
Correct.
Okay. I think from the 2010 initial facility planning guidebook that was used, the guidebook isn't the name that was given, but back in 2010, when we adopted the first facility plan, 21 was considered the average that we generally have, so let's use that as a multiplier. I'll have to check to see if that's true, but that's my memory.
So, the point being that the validity of that as a choice is something that could potentially be questioned, is what I'm throwing out there.
From my perspective, any question is a viable question.
Okay. That is my last question.
Thank you. Ms. Trubuko, can I, Ms. Pitco wanted to follow up on a comment with your committee.
I just wanted to clarify something, because Ms. Max and Cannelly brought it up. What I was trying to say is that, when you're talking about redistricting, if these numbers are based on October 1st students, shouldn't be really looking at projected enrollments and pre-K being a factor in that. That's where I was going with that.
So, that's for your, I assume, for their consideration, as they continue to do their work? Okay, thank you. Ms. Trubuko.
Thank you. Couple of, a couple of questions. One, if we could talk about, a little further about the specific, the specific facility issues that you brought up with the smaller schools, that as, as you discuss the evolution of classrooms, those schools are perhaps poorly positioned in terms, they don't have enough small spaces. I'm curious about how acute a problem you see that, and as we look forward and overlay our enrollment thoughts, whether or not that's an area of a higher priority in your mind, or something that can just be managed, managed through?
Yeah, so, for example, Jennings is a school that kind of falls into that category of being one of your older facilities, and, you know, we typically see the older facilities need to be, you know, they look different in how they deploy those kind of support resources. And in Jennings, they have, I believe it's two full-size classrooms that they've combined, and then subdivided to kind of meet some of those small support spaces, whether it be special education, resource, et cetera. And so, that was kind of the, if you go back to the slides that kind of categorized the schools, and in terms of the ones that, you know, need to use those full-size classrooms in order to meet the edspec, really, they are essentially creating those small spaces out of full-size classrooms, rather than having those small spaces as kind of standalone spaces that are incorporated into the building.
So, it's enough to be just creative with the space? It doesn't have to be re-engineered?
Exactly. It's enough to be creative in the space, and then the nature of the committee is to look at efficiencies. And when you look at a four-section-per-grade versus a three-section-per-grade, naturally, the four-section-per-grade is going to be a little more efficient in the operation of staffing and achieving your class-sized targets, whatever that number may be.
Got it. The question I have on the enrollment discussion, and this would get, obviously gets to the capacity issues. You mentioned you see enrollment troughing, or maybe having troughed. I wonder if you could spend a moment or two about kind of direct observations you have about that? Some presentations you've done have included birth rate analysis, I'm wondering if you've done anything like that in your preparation for this?
So, before you answer, for some of you whose phone is vibrating, you might be getting the same flash flood warning that I just got. I don't think we're in danger, okay? Please, answer the question.
Sure. Yeah, so, over, over the next few weeks, we'll be developing updated enrollment projections based on this year's enrollment data. However, we did do the projections last year, which it did indeed show that troughing of elementary school enrollments in a few years, and then starting that slow uptick. What we did see, because our projections were in line with what we projected last year, that you're on the same trajectory, and that this will just be, rather than updating the assumptions like we do sometimes, we'll kind of keep those assumptions, such as projected births, kind of on the same trend that we did last year, and then update that out one more year through 2027, 28. So, that should be coming in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and we do, not only looking at who's in the system, but also who's coming into the system. We have requested and received birth data from the Connecticut Department of Public Health, which provides us address-specific births for mothers that are resident of Fairfield, and we're able to generate projections based on a neighborhood level, to plug those individualized births in as well. So, we have, well, we just got the update for the full year of 2016, just came in, so we're able to take a reliable look ahead, going out to 21, 22 or so, for incoming kindergarten class sizes with, with those birth data.
And it's, in your mind, it's clearly coming back into an upswing.
Well, you've been having a little bit of an uptick in your birth decay over the last probably three or four years. You had a big jump between 15 and 16. That jump between birth decay, which just really shows the trend that we're seeing in Connecticut, is more families moving into Connecticut communities with children already in tow than rather... than rather than being born here. We saw that jump back down just a little bit this current year. So we really want to take a look at that to be able to gauge what that future trajectory is of your incoming K, because it really has been moving around. And projections work great when, you know, things are either steady, you know, falling, rising, or level. But when we have some uncertainty, you have to be able to wrap some assumptions around those to be able to develop the best projections.
Right, and my last my last question was not a scenario here, but three of the scenarios incorporate bringing Mill Hill to a 504. I'm curious if you ran, understanding there are site issues, and Mill Hill has only nine acres, and Dwight has 31 acres. Did you look at perhaps what the impact would be if you had expanded Dwight instead of Mill Hill?
We didn't physically look at the expansion, but if that's something you would advise us to look at would be, you know, a what-if of if Dwight were expanded, and I don't know if it's even feasible from an engineering standpoint. That's not really what we, you know, what our core of what we do is. That can be looked at relative to what the demographic shifts and what the redistricting would be. We just knew that Mill Hill has been a studied project. Architects and engineers have looked at it. They've gauged the feasibility of it. They know it's, for lack of a better term, feasible and doable. So that's why we kept that option at the 504.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
Thank you. So is it fair to say that the kindergarten number is the probably the hardest number for us to come up with? And then is it fair to say that after that, it's relative easier to project? So just to draw your attention to your projected enrollment on slide 20.
If I could, for the benefit of the audience who might not, TV audience that might not have seen the nod of the head, if you could answer?
Yes, so kindergarten enrollments are the hardest, only because the only record we have is a birth record, which would have occurred five or six years prior. Once the students are in the system, typically, our margin of error is much lower in our projections.
So if you look at slide 20 and you look at 2017, 18, the K number, that's the bottom, basically, is what you're saying, at 637. And then we start to rise. So we've bottomed out in terms of that kindergarten number, what you're projecting.
I wouldn't call it the bottom of your elementary enrollment. I'd probably call it the the leading edge of your enrollment rebound.
Well, yeah, but it's, I hear you, but it's also you're projecting now every year after that 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 kindergarten number gets goes up pretty significantly.
Yeah, based based on the stabilization of the...
And just picking on up on what Mr. Gerber said before, if you actually compared that number to the 2016 number, that's up considerably from where it was originally projected. So with all that in mind, just thinking about your suggestion of that sweet spot between somewhere between 80 and 90%, and we're already in the 85, 86%. And basically, we're going to be seeing a, you know, an enrollment number that's going to, although the total is going to start is going down, it's going to stabilize and go up. So the question really in my mind was why the thinking of closing? Why all those scenarios to close schools if that be the scenario, if we're in the sweet spot? And why not look at basically the maps in which they're way they were drawn right now, where the lines are so unfriendly geographically? And getting back to Mrs. Gerber's point, is it easy enough now that we have this data to kind of look at that in ways to plug that in so that the lines are drawn differently, which could also look at at the same time how you feed the middle schools? Because that's also going to be problematic.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think in the way we had viewed it is to be able to feed and fuel the conversation to look at, look at a consolidation while knowing that there are a building addition out there and being able to gain capacity through that building addition while consolidating a facility to operate, because one of the charges, it was our understanding, was to look at ways to be able to operate more efficiency while still delivering the educational mission and vision. We felt that it would be a good point to say, what if to consolidate and then pair that with a potential expansion to see if that makes some sense? And it may not make some sense, but at least to be able to have a conversation starter on it, to seed it a little bit, that was really our goal to put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kylie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions have been asked. Thank you. Quick question for you guys on process. I know we're going to get this in PowerPoint, but there's roughly 25 Excel spreadsheet tables baked into this PowerPoint presentation. Can we also get those spreadsheets so that we can do some individual analysis on that data? Is the PowerPoint designed for the spreadsheets are actually in it? Or are they pictured in it?
No, they're pictures. So what we'll do is we'll kind of extract them from our projections and modeling system. We can send those on as a separate, a separate kind of document rather than embedding them in the PowerPoint so you can take a look at them.
Thank you for that. And I know it's been said, but I do want to reiterate the comments about the financial requirements for all of these. And what I've heard is some of that is going to be beyond the scope of either what you've been charged to do or even what your firm typically does, right? But we're going to have to find a way together to work with the administration to to come up with those figures, because, you know, we have A through F, and I'm not sure how many we're going to end up with. But that financial impact, considering all the components, is just going to be a very important measuring stick for us to understand, you know, how we prioritize things and what makes sense. So I don't know how we collaboratively collaboratively get that done, but I think it's important that we figure that out, okay?
Ms. Kylie, if I can make a comment. Between what's on the page that is in color in front of you and these various numbers, there's a lot of ideas out there. And so it might not be the best use of staff time to try and cost out every one of them. And the committee would be, I think, well-advised to say, let's look at what it is that we want to take seriously and then cost out those. But that is a discussion that the committee will have to have to have.
Right, and I wasn't suggesting that whatsoever.
No, I know you weren't. I was just using this as a jumping off point to remind people of that.
Thank you. And in similar fashion, how the ideas get to you about what you're looking at? And I know you folks have taken some thoughts from previous meetings or communications, or you've used your own thoughts, but even tonight, some ideas have come up about what might be interesting and what might not be. And so we need to find a way to get that two-way communication going between, you know, the Board of Education, the administration, and the subcommittee, back to you folks, so that we can kind of wean it down to, you know, two or three or four, whatever it is, reasonable number of options for us to review, detail, price, and consider. So I don't know how we do that yet either. It's another process question, but I think there's a lot of process questions out there to be answered. Quickly, on a couple of things here, could we, and maybe we can do the Excel on our own, but when we're looking at the operational efficiency across the board, and this print is really small, so it's hard for me to read as I sit here, but a number of these tables are using Mill Hill without the portable, so it's like 270 something, right? And we don't know what's going to happen at Mill Hill, if anything, and or when. But I think at some point, we'll need to mathematically look at those other five rooms as being utilized, because five times 21 is 105, right? So is it, should we be looking at it at 272? Should we be looking at it at 377? Should we be looking at it at 504, right? So I think it's a little incomplete for us to not at least look at it apples to apples with the number of rooms that are there today with the broad assumption that whatever happens there might replace those rooms, okay? Not knowing what that will be, I think it's a little short-sighted to not at least consider that mathematically, okay? The other chart, which was hard for me to read as well, I apologize, was that 57-year State of Connecticut chart, you know, right? And this data does exist. I've seen it in the past, and maybe Mrs. Tribuco already has it. But I could not tell by looking at this if there was a similar 57-year chart for the town of Fairfield itself? Is that, I can't quite see it on here?
Yeah, so this is just for the state of Connecticut. The data source that we used for the data going from 1960 up to around 2000 is from the national government, and they aggregate up to just the state level, not the district level.
Right, but just, you know, just following the highs and the lows, it would be interesting to see the town of Fairfield layered against that, because maybe where they're dipping, we're not dipping as much. Maybe where they're peaking, we're not peaking as much, or vice versa. So, I mean, anecdotally, it would be nice to see one over the other, if that makes sense, as a request?
It doesn't. It doesn't. If somewhere in the records here that data can be provided to us, we'd be glad to be able to then overlay, because it would help us in sort of understanding where it fits and if it follows the same peak and trough that we see in other places in Connecticut.
Okay. And my last question pertains to slide 44, just picking on that one in particular. It's the one that gets two schools into the 17-point something percent on the racial imbalance percentage. I think it's slide 44. So not my area of expertise just yet, but when we're looking at the big picture, the long term, what I'm not sure about is while this gets it below that 25 or 20% threshold, when you go from yellow light to red light, right? How long might the 17.3 or 17.5 be good? Is that is that a lot? I think you mentioned it was a good long-term view, but I'm not sure what that meant. How safe could we or might we be in the high teens, three, four, or five years out? Is that low enough to fix the problem looking forward?
Yeah, so we do not project race and ethnicity when we develop our enrollment projections, so we have no real data point for what racial balance is going to look like a few years out. Typically, what we've done when we've looked at this issue in the past in Fairfield is taken a look back over the course of, you know, five or six years to kind of test the feasibility and looking at kind of the variation from year to year and the scenarios we looked at in 2015, 2016. 20% was really the benchmark that we kind of internally set. This wasn't, you know, anything that we've really dealt with for other districts to that kind of same level. But we felt that based on kind of that five-year trend line, there wasn't going to be a 5% variation.
Yeah, I think what we would do in taking a look at this scenario D or D2 in particular would be to do that historic look back based on this or whatever the preferred boundary alignment is and to look at that percent change for the six years of data that we do have and compare it to the percent change for the benchmark, which is the like grades, and see if it's keeping pace or if it's outpacing that. And if it's outpacing it, obviously, then you'd have a much smaller window of viability. But if it's roughly increasing at the same rate, then we'd have a little more confidence in it.
Okay, and lastly, I'm sorry?
Okay, no, go ahead.
Have we done? Do you have a slide you can share with us or maybe quickly share with us now? Just kind of your theory on coming up with, you know, the trends, you know? You're looking at, you know, you know, the local economic data, migration factors, birth rates. I know it's pretty standard stuff for the most part, but if you could just share with us at some point your methodology and how you got to where you are?
Do you want to go geek?
Sure, yeah, so when we develop our projections, the projections are all based on underlying assumptions of housing and economic condition. So, for example, if when we're projecting out births over the next five years, which will feed into our 10-year kindergarten projections, we'll typically run a regression model that's tied to local housing or economic conditions. And we'll share all that with you and the assumptions that are kind of baked into the projections.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, I was only interrupting because I realized a mistake I made. I should have started with our two students in the event that they needed to get back and do some homework. And so I might suggest to the committee that as you go through this in the future, you might give them the first crack and not the last crack. Ms. Donnelly?
I, for one, enjoyed listening to everyone's questions, and I don't happen to have any right now. But I appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into this presentation, and I will be looking at it. So I am prepared to ask more in-depth questions that are next.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKay?
All right, so kind of all my stuff has been covered by all the committee members here, but thank you very much. It was a very information-packed presentation.
So in case you're all wondering whether you did well with limiting yourself basically to average of five minutes apiece, you're virtually within one minute of that, so very good. Thank you. Are there committee members or board members that have additional questions that they would like to ask? Let me just get them down here. Jessica, who else? Ms. Carnell, Mr. Gerber, and Mr. Patton, where is that? On this side, Mr. Acer? Where are you, Mr. Acer? Mr. Acer? Anybody down that side of the table have additional questions you want to ask? Okay, so we'll just start in the same order that we did before. Mrs. Gerber?
Well, this is actually just a follow-up to Mr. Kylie's comment. As luck would have it, I do have enrollment numbers for Fairfield going back to 1949 up until this year. So, and I was actually looking at them when you were talking about it, but it is actually very interesting in that the the peak enrollment here on this chart for the state is in fact the peak enrollment for Fairfield. The 1971, that was our highest enrollment at 12,000 students. The bottom, 88, 89, was the lowest enrollment for us, not ever, because back in the 40s it was lower. But 88, 89 was 6,000. So we went from 12,000 in '71 to 6,000 in 88, 89. But what's interesting here is that then it goes back up in the state. The peak was 2004, 2005, if my eyes are correct, on this chart, that 2004 or '05, correct? Our peak here in the district was 2012. So we kept growing for another seven years after the state peaked. And while we've gone down, we haven't gone down as much, so just...
That was kind of my question?
Yeah.
So you might remember that I said that people in this community have a long history and et cetera. There's proof of that. And I would ask Mrs. Gerber that if you get those numbers to our superintendent, she'll get them to the consultants, and they'll be able to create that overlay graph. Do you want to follow up on that, or so Mr. Patton, if you don't mind?
Just quickly, I mean, if you go into the 2012, '13 budget numbers, the archive, there's a great chart, doesn't go quite back as far as Mrs. Gerber, but goes back to '81, '82, and it actually breaks it down by K5, 6, 8, 9, 12. So it's really interesting to look at, so just for other people. It's on the archive budget for the 2012, '13 year.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
All right, where am I here? Some things that my fellow committee members and board members have asked, and Ms. Pitco talked about the ECC projections a bit. That seems to be the one pocket area where you, it's probably harder to predict because it's not necessarily demographic or birth rate, you know, based and whatnot. But I would like to see, because it greatly affects at least two of the scenarios with or without moving the ECC, to get ECC projection numbers, because certainly we know this year's are big influx and are growing. And so that should be incorporated into your scenarios. So please, if you could research that information. And I'm not sure, I guess this is more debate for the committee, not necessarily for for the two of you. But if you could get, or if through the chair to Dr. Jones, we could get, you know, some kind of cost scenario of moving the ECC slash moving Walter Fitzgerald, because I don't know if those two parts are interchangeable or not. I know there's a cost savings by, you know, obviously, you know, the rental cost of the Walter Fitzgerald campus. But and educationally, I'd like to hear from our, you know, Director of Special Education and whatnot on the other ramifications of moving Walter Fitzgerald back into the regular facility, because maybe that's not something we ever want to consider to see if those are actually, you know, feasible ideas. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Ms. Carnell?
I'm just curious, you've obviously done this before. Do you track how the numbers come out in terms of how close you are to your projections? I guess is what I'm asking. Because that's what everybody seems to be, and it's, you know, wondering about the projections. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, we're always tracking our projections and grouping different like dirgs together and seeing, you know, what are commonalities between performance and, you know, and then there's one of those things that... there's one of those things that, you know, back in 2006, 2007, everybody who was in our field of projecting, the next couple of years, they were completely wrong because of the unknown with the Great Recession, and there's those dramatic events that really throw it off. But overall, we've set a benchmark where we look at one percent per year over the life of the projections, and strive to have our projections line up with that for the, whatever horizon, if they're five years, it would be five percent out for the district. But when you get, try to apply that same benchmark to say, like, an individual grade, and you're projecting, say, K at Jennings School, where you're talking about such a small number, the percentages get thrown off the, out the window, and rather, we try to look at it from a section standpoint of how many sections are we really trying to, you know, project going out, because you'd never be able to hit that one percent benchmark. The number's just too darn small.
Is there potentially something in particular that may help your numbers be more in line, or something that may unfortunately push your numbers away as close to your projections as expected?
The biggest things, the biggest things that drive our projections, truthfully, are the economy and the housing market, and those things, you know, at least at what we're doing, if we were able to project those things, we probably wouldn't be doing school projections, we'd be doing a little something else with our careers.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, but...
Anything else? Mrs. Carnell? Ms. Carnell, Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, actually, I've got a sort of question for the committee, because it seems to me this rule of thumb or guideline for McKinley having fewer students per classroom, you know, in my mind, this racial, you know, redistricting for racial imbalance has always been, you know, for me, a question of why would, you know, if you were in a school with a lot of, you know, ELL, English Language Learner students, and there was a conscious decision to provide a better ratio, a lower student teacher ratio, and if doing this would somehow change that and bring those kids into classrooms without that benefit, that's a major change, and I think it's hard for these guys to do their work unless we decide how to instruct them. Like, if, you know, I don't think it's fair to have them do two scenarios, one where it's, you know, eighteen, and one where it's twenty-one. So, we need to decide what to tell them, otherwise, we're going to waste money, because that's pretty upsetting for people who are going from, you know, racially, it'll remain, you know, racially imbalanced, but there's no benefit to the school that they're in in terms of ratios, you know, of instructors, teachers to students. So, hopefully, we can make up our minds on that, or, I know how I feel about it, but, you know, we should have some sort of decision on that.
Mr. Gerber, if I could just one comment?
Yeah.
There may be that question or other questions that come up, and the committee says it's worth exploring, but we don't want to go down that path if indeed the Board of Education is clearly wanting to maintain the purposeful address, the achievement gap at McKinley issue. And so, you may want to come back to us at some...
It's like ELL gap, right? They have the highest level, yeah.
That you may want to come back to us after the November and December meeting and saying, here are the questions, we'd like to talk with you about whether you're willing to go down that path and whatnot. Is that essentially what you're getting at?
That's what I'm getting at, that if we don't make that decision, and these guys do another round of work, assuming that we're going to be the same, then, you know, and then we decide, you know, that was a waste of time, because it shouldn't be the same. The, and then I do have a question, a couple of questions for you guys. One is, I'm not 100% clear on the granularity of your data. Do you have, like, house-level data with ages, or is it street, you know, how granular?
So, the, we do have addresses of current students in Fairfield Public Schools, and those drive the numbers that you see associated with each scenario, as well as the projections.
But do you have ages of people in all houses? So, you don't know how old, because, you know, the turnover, I made a joke about the, you know, people moving out at, you know, at post-retirement age, you would need that to know how many people are moving in by district?
Yeah, so I can get into a little more detail on the data we use for scenario planning, as well as the projections. So, we have your enrollment by address that we have mapped out. We also have birth records that we use, and those are address-matched as well, which kind of gives us a bit of a trajectory in terms of neighborhood level, where are we seeing, you know, influx of, you know, young children that could potentially enroll in kindergarten. We also have home sale data at the address level, and we compare that to your enrollment data to kind of track in and out migration to the district, identify hotspots where you see a lot of new students showing up that are tied to a home sale, and those are really the three main data points that we use.
We don't have any, we don't have any census specific for each household, it just doesn't exist anywhere, but we do have, and it's rather dated, 2010 and some 2015 ACS census data by block group, which can give us the feel for a neighborhood, you know, what is the percent of householders, say, over the age of 65, and that could be a general indication of potential future turnover based on age.
Right.
But it's not tied to a specific address, it's based on a census geography. So, an area probably about the size of a school district, but doesn't always align with the school district.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's, I mean, there's probably not a person in this room who, you know, who's been here 20, 25 years, who didn't move into a neighborhood saying, oh, there's no young people here, and then five years later, it's, you know, all young people.
And then 15 years later, you're the old people.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's the point, the point is, when Jess and I moved to Florida. Now, the last question I have is on economy. In Fairfield, my sense is that during the Great Recession, you know, there are a lot of kids who are going to private school or parochial school. Sometimes, the economy will drive kids back into the public school. Is that sort of considered, how many kids are in private school, and some sensitivity around fluctuation in that percentage?
Yeah, I can't remember what the number was, because we looked at it back in 2015, but I'd be glad to be able to get you that percentage. We did look at during the Great Recession, how many may have come back from private to public, and whether or not it needed to be adjusted in the projections for that. I just don't know it offhand.
But you do have the number of kids, not just, oh, no, you don't, you really have the number of kids in the private, in the public schools, but not in the private school.
We have some data on the private schools, however, starting in the last three or so years, the state hasn't been publishing that, just because of budget cuts.
Right.
They redact a large amount of it, so it's not very current, but we do have it from, say, 2007 through 2013, just nothing with significant sample size has been put out since then, because they don't have staff to...
But you might be able to, like, gross up and just get a sense for this pool of kids who may not be in the public schools, but could, or at least some percentage of them could end up...
Yeah, we could definitely get a general percent, because I think it's pretty, it's been pretty stable, if I recall, of, you know, how much do you really capture of the total universe of Fairfield school-age students?
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Acer?
All right, I promise this won't be long. Through the chair to the superintendent, to Dr. Jones, I can't remember, if you don't mind, whether, this has been discussed, I apologize. I know in the past meetings, you mentioned that we were hoping that this information would be ready for tonight and working on that. Can you remind me, what was the original charge or purpose of hiring the firm this time? I seem to remember a couple of things, and I can't remember exactly what it was.
Yeah, I actually brought a, is that working? Actually brought a sheet when we had our first committee meeting, and the first task was looking at just tenure projection, low, middle, high, which, we haven't seen the tenure yet, but we have the short-term. Facility utilization, looking at current ed specs applied to the buildings, and that had to do more with mill-hill construction. Analyzing unique program spaces, providing analysis of space available for general education across the district. And part of that, I think they did a great job just showing the utilization, because a lot of people will zero in on just numbers, and there are people in our town that think we have hundreds of seats available, but they don't understand that utilization between eighty, between that eighty and ninety can mean every single classroom is actually full. It's just you may have 17 children instead of 24. And then the third thing was the reconfiguration, and it was three components. Could we consolidate an elementary school? And that was a lot of the discussion from last spring, and it's just answering that factual question. Examining possible grade reconfiguration, examining pocket redistricting, and for mill-hill construction in relation to their enrollment growth across the district. And part of that discussion, even at our Board of Ed meeting, was can you reverse the construction project where we could go in and renovate first, if the economy doesn't get better, and then expand, where generally, we do the expansion, and then we come in and do the renovation. So, they've answered those pretty basic questions, and the intent, and kind of just to keep in mind, it's expensive work, they're worth it, but it is expensive work to do, so if we start getting into looking at these on a deeper level, where we're really talking about the financial aspect, we have to be very thoughtful about what we ask them or another firm to do because of the expense.
Okay, because that was going to be my follow-up question. What is, are we paid up through them further going into these two scenarios that you talk about? Is that what we're covered through, and anything additional, like Mr. Kylie has asked, or anything would be an additional expense?
Well, and I would say, and I don't want to speak for them, but their expertise is probably not the financial analysis of a school district, and that's generally a different firm. So, if we get into a really high-level analysis, and you're looking at one of these scenarios or a different scenario that the committee really wants to consider, because you have to look at everything, it needs to be somebody who understands school construction, understands the financial implications, probably, like, one of the easiest examples would be if we closed an elementary school, because a scenario says you can do it, and then we're looking at the trend line 10 years out, or 15 years out, and we know it's going to go back up. If we closed that school, and then we want to reopen it, we have to bring that code, that school completely up to code, and there's a huge cost to do that, so we would want to understand what that number is, and that's why sometimes something like grade reconfiguration is more cost-effective if you're in a pinch, because the building stays open.
Okay, yeah, I think we have a pretty good historical background on what those costs are.
They usually just don't reopen.
So, yeah, but, so, okay, so just to note then, so it's important for the committee to know that we can't just be throwing questions back and forth to them, that we have to really get our ducks in a row before we actually ask for any more information.
Absolutely.
I think Mr. Acer raises a good point that is often stated this way. What do you need to know to make a decision versus what is nice to know? Is that it, Mr. Acer?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I think you asked?
I don't have any questions.
You don't? Okay. I think we're at an end. Anybody else want to raise their hand? If not, you are released, we have some additional business to do. So, on the general discussion of the ad hoc committee, this is more in the vein of getting you information, more than to start a debate. The debate, the debate really should start in November and December, if you will, among the ad hoc committee, but I refer you to this sheet, and remind you again, it's, I spilled water on mine, so that's why it looks like this. Remind you again that it is a compilation of the brainstorming ideas that came up the last committee meeting, and that's all they were, is brainstorming ideas. I know Mr. Sahagian kind of got a few emails, but I would hope that people would understand that this committee's charge is to look at a variety of questions, and either to put them to bed or explore them further. So, have some patience with the process. And so, it's from the brainstorming ideas, it's from last year's budget scenarios, tier one, two, and three, and it was one of our administrators in the district sent in some suggestions, and then they're put in different columns based on the judgment of our superintendent, and they're shown in either short-term impact, it might be midterm before, they could really be an issue that is helping us save money in long-term, where it might take longer to actually see the savings. With that as a description, I'll ask the superintendent to walk through the document.
May I offer a suggestion, please? Before we go through this, which I don't think is complete, just by the way, can we have a quick discussion about process?
Actually, that was going to be the second part of this general discussion on ad hoc committee, so if you don't mind...
So, you want to have a process discussion before we talk about the recommendations? I mean, after we have the recommendations?
We're not debating the recommendations, we're just putting what's in front of you, and as I mentioned to you at the beginning of the meeting, if there's an idea that was suggested that is not on here, that's just simply an oversight, and bring it up tonight and say, don't forget to add this, or if between the last meeting and now, you've got an idea that you want to put on the table without getting into a lot of detail, just blurt it out, and we'll add it to this list, so the committee will have a working document to talk about in November. Dr. Jones?
And I might just note, if there's any of our senior staff, you can go home if you want to, just so you can sneak out, if you're not normally at this. So, basically, when you talk about process, after our last committee meeting, we had just pages of all of these different suggestions and ideas, and people who have emailed, so I just tried to put some framework to this, just to help us at least understand what is in front of us, and certainly, I could have missed something, and we're probably going to get more suggestions, I'm sure, almost every day. But what I've tried to do is look across the top, but what are those things that are really programmatic? And some of these came up last year, but again, this is just everything that's been suggested, it's not a recommendation, it's just in a category. Then there's another one that's legislative in town, and some of these are what I would consider components that we probably wouldn't take up with the committee, but the committee may feel differently, that it's a town issue, doesn't mean it's not important, but like, advocating at the state level for mandates would be probably a difficult task for this committee, doesn't mean we can't do it, or encourage a different avenue. The facilities, these are just some of these things you heard tonight, the suggestions that were very facilities-driven. District managerial, these are things that we already discuss, we look at, but these are all suggestions that have been brought forward, implementing like a furlough day. We have to work directly with our bargaining units if we were going to do that, so it's very much a district managerial function. When we look at something like workdays for secretarial support, we have to work directly with our principals and our leadership to understand that if you're reducing a position, make sure you're not creating a safety or some sort of situation at the building level. So, a lot of input there from our senior leaders. And then looking at the things that are already in place, a lot of these are on that tier one, tier two, tier three that we implemented, that are currently in place. And overall, on the right-hand side, I just, I put a column that's kind of not viable, and these were just a couple that came up that I think, but again, the committee may feel differently for another reason, I may have misinterpreted. I would see this column hopefully becoming like an eliminated column, so that if we discuss one of these other items, that we can get some things off the list, because we're obviously not going to be able to consider every single thing that's on here. When you look at, like, the first one, that was not viable, that one is where we talked about if you closed a school, you could then bring all of your outplaced students back to one facility. That's not allowed by law, so it's not a viable option, so we took that off. Simplify the evaluation system for teachers to free up administrative time, that one is not viable, because again, by law, we have to have those teacher evaluations, and our evaluation system, we're already at the minimum of the evaluations that we're allowed to do. Now, we are working with the committee trying to find efficiencies in the software system and that sort of thing, but overall, we can't just say we're not going to do them, or we're only going to do half. And then returning to half-day kindergarten, that one, especially with pre-K being discussed on the horizon, and by 2022, which is just crazy to me that this year that came out, that universal pre-K, they want to plan at the state where we would implement universal pre-K. So, you wouldn't want to go backwards in kindergarten, and then turn around and be asked to implement universal pre-K. But again, the committee may feel differently.
So, any additions to this list that people think wasn't captured, that was mentioned at the last meeting, or that they would like to add, so that the committee will have a more complete list? Anybody? Mr. Duett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there's a couple of things. You know, our last meeting, there was a discussion about class size, guideline versus policies, and I've been struggling with guideline versus policies ever since, right? And on the Board of Ed website, there's policies which really are just horrible to follow, and try to figure out what the heck's what. So, anyway, I think, I think what we should talk about here... So anyway, I think, I think what we should talk about here is where are, do our guidelines not meet our policies? And how can we make sure that we're implementing our guidelines or our policies? So for example, if there's a policy that says, pick a function at a school, not a non-teaching function, you have to have guidance counselors, there should be three at every school, and we have four. Why is there four? So I think that's a worthwhile exercise, to apply guidelines versus policies, what's the difference and why are they different? And then how, how can we go back and look at how we're implementing and see if we're actually implementing our guidelines and policies? And then my other one, which I did bring up last time, was to make sure we looked at processes, departments, attributes, synergies, anything we can consolidate. So could we have one IT department across town? Could we have one HR department, that kind of thing? I don't think that got captioned here, and I know that's a big...
That is in here, I have to find it, it just may not be well described.
I can't find it either, I've been trying to find it.
Yeah, I've been looking.
Review common town, FCS of the municipal administration.
Would that be on long-term, number three in the second column? Review common town for public schools?
Number three and four was the intent behind your comment.
Number three and four where?
Under legislative town.
Review common, oh, okay. Peace. And then the last thing, and I think Ms. Tribuco brought this up last time, she wanted to know about the house structure, and we wanted to review it. The only thing I've seen here is eliminate the house structure. I do not believe, and I don't want to speak for you, I don't believe that was Ms. Tribuco's point. I think the point was we should at least have a discussion about it and see if it could be consolidated. Is that correct?
That's right. What I'd like to understand is the genesis of the house system, what its purpose was versus how it's used today, and how relevant it is and whether there are...
So if we change the word to review, that's more in keeping with what your suggestion was?
I don't know enough about it to be able to say eliminate or not, but worthy of reflection.
And I think that's it until we talk about policy or procedures.
Okay. Mrs. Gerber?
And I don't know if this is the case or not, but have the committee members been given a copy of the prismatic audit and Dr. Title's two responses to it? Just talking about the house system, because I know that came up in the audit that was done back in 2010.
Excellent point.
And then I know that Dr. Title had two responses to it on different levels, and I remember he did respond to the house system and not to say that it hasn't changed. I mean, that was seven years ago, almost eight years ago.
If I can, through the superintendent, reach out to Ms. Brown, is that document still archived on our website?
I can't remember. It had been.
It had been. So if the committee would like to read that roughly seventy-page document, then we could load it back onto the website so that you could look at it for those who are interested.
More than seventy pages.
More than seventy pages.
Yeah, so it's a lot.
It's a lot. So I'm going to say, no, I am not going to print this for every committee member, okay? But we can, we can load it onto the website so that those who may want to explore it could. So, let's see, that's it? Mr. Gerber?
If you discuss this while I was out, I apologize, but looking at, at some of these, these seem to be under the threshold of what I thought our responsibility was.
I would agree with you, but rather than the chairman of the board and the superintendent saying, now, you're not supposed to look at it, we thought it was better practice to at least acknowledge everybody's suggestion, put it in front of the committee, and let the committee in November say, these really are beyond our purview.
They belong to the superintendent, to the board.
Yeah, and move them into the relabeled not viable column or whatever, but as soon as the two of us decided you're not going to look at it, somebody would say, why not?
Well, no, but you, I think in last meeting said, there's sort of, we're looking at sort of major...
Absolutely.
Things, so pay-to-play extracurricular activities, this is discussed at the board table every year, why would we want to discuss things like that here?
Why wouldn't we?
Well, because, I mean, it's sort of...
It is also discussed at the Board of Finance table frequently, and I would say, I don't want to speak for Mr. DeWitt, but, but the Board of Finance may have a different viewpoint on whether pay-to-play makes sense or not, and other boards may have, so...
No, I'm just saying, the charge, I'm not sure now I understand the charge of the committee, because I thought the committee was sort of major, I mean, originally, we were calling it sort of structural things, but, but actually getting into where we can cut, cut, you know, cut sewing at the middle, I mean, these are all things that if the board can't figure this out, then I'd be surprised.
And I'm saying, I agree with you.
Right, okay.
And I think it's the committee that should fairly shortly and quickly say, this is not our purview, and move it off.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it? Other comment? Mrs. Pitco?
Just looking at the long-term in blue under facilities, I didn't think to ask this when the consultants were here, but number seven, does that fall under not viable? Consolidate to one high school? Because they didn't address that.
They didn't address that, and I think, I think that's a discussion for the committee, because I think one is finance and one is educational quality, and those are two very controversial conversations.
And again, not to be a broken record, but just on the surface, based on emails that have come in, there are lots of people who have suggested that that just is not viable because of the size of our facility or whatever, and only so that we did not say, we've already decided that that's not viable, we thought that was a committee decision that ought to be made fairly quickly and say, we looked at two or three facts and this just doesn't make sense. You know, so again, that's what I'm hoping will happen in November. Ms. Pitco, anything else? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I don't know if now is the time when you'd want us to add any ideas that we had. Just one thing that I had referenced to Dr. Jones and yourself is that idea of opening up the possibility of corporate sponsorships of our sports teams, facilities, what have you. I know there's a perception, and the perception was that it was policy, which I could not find, although I don't find it quite as horrible to navigate as Mr. DeWitt does, but I couldn't find anything in our policy that actually prohibited it. I know that it is, however, our practice, and I just thought that that would be something I'd like to throw out to the committee to consider.
Okay, and so we'll put that under some column. You may end up with a number of ideas, that might be one of them, that you said, this is something that the district ought to look at seriously, so put it under district managerial. But again, that's the committee's decision. Anything else, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? Ms. Tribuco?
Something maybe to add to the list, using, using the projections we have in the enrollment numbers, we have a big difference, like ten percentage points differential in current utilization among our middle schools. So we're at one hundred and twelve percent at Fairfield Woods, we're at ninety-four percent in Tomlinson, and we're a seven percent differential between the two high schools presently. And if I use Malona McBroom's enrollment numbers, the most recent ones I could find that go out twenty-five to twenty-six, we still have that big gap. I'm wondering from an idea of load balancing and thinking that, thinking, thinking, thinking ways to shift students from one school to another without a formal redistricting, is there an opportunity for kind of a self-redistricting? That if, that if somebody's at one school and it won't affect their high school feeder, if they'd be able to opt to another school space available and opt out of transportation? So give up the transportation cost, there's space available, we load balance, does that create efficiencies or not? Does it create cost savings or not? Understanding it might be a hornet's nest of an idea, but just thinking from a system level standpoint, if you can run more of your assets at a more consistent utilization level, odds are you will find financial efficiencies from that. That's one point that I have. Another one is simply on transportation. We are not at a state maximum in terms of the bus or walker radius. Neighboring towns are, Trumbull and Norwalk are, Westport's not, because Westport doesn't have sidewalks. Does it make sense to revisit what we have for how far away you have to live from the school to determine whether or not you get a bus?
Excellent. Add it to the list.
And the third, and the third point I have was following up on an idea that Mr. Sahagian presented last week, and that's the Chromebooks, the textbooks. I'm wondering if there's a balancing point to look at between textbooks and Chromebooks with an idea that there might be, there might be a balancing point between classes that are best served with textbooks that don't need to be revised or revisited all that frequency, like, frequently like Latin textbooks versus, say, contemporary civics textbooks, where you might not even want a textbook. Can you sunset textbooks as an entire cost area for certain classes and then extend the shelf life, obviously of other classes that would require the textbook? Is there a balancing point we could find rather than treat it as a duplicative experience? That's what I have.
And I think that's fair, to the extent that these three or four words appear to limit the conversation, they were really intended just to capture the conversation. Anybody else have comments they want to make on this page here? Mr. Sahagian?
Just a question whether or not this is within the purview of this committee about determining what high school students go to. Currently, it's determined by the elementary school. That's what drives the high school. Is that something that should be a conversation for this group?
I'll answer this question myself, but that really is the board eventually, and that may be one of those questions that you'd say, let's ask the board for some clear feedback on that. That when you look at facility utilization, it'll almost force you to look at feeder patterns. You're hard-pressed to do one without the other. And so if you're looking at a scenario that makes a significant change to feeder patterns, that might be a question that you'd want to test with the board before you went down that path too much. Is that a, for board members here, is that a fair statement? Okay, so consider that a fair statement. Anybody else?
Are we adding that?
Hmm?
Are we adding that? I mean, I think that's a valid consideration. If you could, if you could ignore what middle school you went to and laid, if you could cut the town in half and said, you go to Little or you go to Ward, and it saved five school buses, and the superintendent told me budget season, one school bus equals one teacher, why wouldn't we consider that?
So we'll add feeder patterns to the...
I think at least has to be considered, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, is that the, yeah, that's the gist, you're right.
I think they come part and parcel with facilities, but we'll add it as a separate topic so that we don't forget about it.
Great. Are we allowed to comment on...
Please, if, well, first, anybody else have suggestions they want to add to this? Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any suggestions about what to add, because this is, this is a pretty extensive list, and I imagine it will be growing at some clip in the short term. My question is back to some of the earlier comments about the process, and we might be a little early in the committee's lifeline here to really lay out the process for how the committee's going to work. You know, you know, we're, we need to make sure, you know, we need to find a way to make sure that we're organized and we're focused and we're successful, and we have a lot of goals, we have a lot of information, we have a lot of deadlines, short, mid, long term, a lot of expectations. And it's, while all this information's great, and I love these conversations, I mean, and I'm not looking to discourage any of this, I'm just a little unclear on how we're going to manage, you know, the inflow of ideas, how are things going to get brought forward? How are they going to make a list? How are they going to go off a list? How formal or informal we're going to be with that process, and how informal or formal we're going to be with the general committee? How are we going to get our work done? You know, because it's early now, and I think it's productive to have, you know, general ad hoc conversations so that we can get the juices flowing and get the ideas out there. But at some point, we're going to, much like these guys had to do with their numbers, right? At some point, we're going to have to, you know, put pencil to paper and start looking at things and asking the right questions of, you know, consultants and the administration and the Board of Education so that we can get answers and information to make informed decisions. I'm just worried that we're going to get too far astray from that, and if there's a way for us before we put the committee in, like, our next meeting is in a couple weeks, and we still haven't, you know, determined the leadership of the committee and how the committee's going to run. So I know, I know I'm a little ahead on that request, but I'm also a little concerned that maybe some other things are moving more quickly than, you know, a process might allow them to run.
At the first meeting of the committee, I had made a suggestion, and so let me back up first and say, the only ground rules that exist for the committee are found within the committee commission. So it's the committee that sets its own ground rules and its process and what timeframe they want to kind of work on. I had suggested that at this meeting, new ideas might be added to this table, and I would invite committee members, community members, board members to between now and I'll say November eighth.
November eighth?
November eighth, which is about a week before the next meeting. If you have thought of something, bring it forward and put it on the list, and let the committee look in November, and perhaps November and December is spent looking at the various ideas and finding which ones really belong off and which ones you want to continue to explore, and maybe use both November and December to whittle the list down. But again, that's up to the committee to kind of, in my mind, that's up to the committee to decide.
Right, and I was, I was addressing more the structure of the committee.
Yeah.
And how the committee will work and operate so that we can, you know, effectively and efficiently get through, you know, all of this information and then come out of this with, with some good recommendations.
So let me also say something about what we talked about at the first meeting. By the time I got all of the invited institutions to send in names, it was only a couple of days before the first committee meeting. We received a number of people who expressed interest in joining part of the at-large committee membership. And then I needed to take into account the fact that we have a Board of Ed education, Board of Education campaign and election that is going to change who's available.
Right.
With all that said, it's my intent, right after the election, to name the permanent members from the Board of Ed. So, and then second, we have sent out applications to people who had sent in emails saying, I'd like to be considered, so that there's a consistent set of information on all of the applicants. In the process of doing that, we've actually had a couple of people who expressed initial interest, actually three, say, thanks, but no thanks, and have withdrawn their names. And so that application information is being collected in the superintendent's office, and then, then I'll be able to look at that and decide how to fill those final three slots that exist, so that hopefully the committee will be at full strength for your November meeting.
And thank you very much for that, and please don't, my comments are not...
No, no, not at all.
...to be critical, I'm just, I'm a task-at-hand guy.
Yeah.
You know, I need to understand what my task is and then figure out how to do it and then get it done, so...
No, no, it's all good questions, and I'm glad you asked it, so I could say, here's the process.
Thank you. Are we going to get back to more on this later? Do we have a follow-up?
So if there's nothing else to be added to this, let's move on to the process side.
Okay.
So, did you, because that seems to be where we are.
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Patton was next, and then I'll go back to Mr. DeWitt and Mr....
So just, just quickly, in my opinion, to Mr. Sahagian's comments on the feeder patterns, I would just warn the committee members to just, that comes very close to redistricting, and we all know where that goes, so, I mean, do we want a presentation on feeder patterns? You know, maybe if you decide you want to waste a, not waste, but spend a meeting on that, but a presentation and discussion feeder patterns between the math involved, the lines, et cetera, that could be four hours and you wouldn't even, you know, make a dent in it, let alone, you know, get a solution. So I would caution the committee to keep it simple, go for, you know, the exact charge, you know, the efficiencies and structural changes, uses of the facilities, et cetera, even things like the two high schools, they're pretty... Even things like the two high schools, they're pretty evenly, as Ms. Gerber's pointed out, membership-wise on both high schools, they're both over capacity and they're both pretty, well, they're at capacity. But they're, they're both pretty even in terms of attendance, so messing with that doesn't get you a heck of a lot.
That's a viewpoint. Okay, Mr. DeWitt, did you have a question on process that you wanted to ask? I interrupted you earlier, and so I wanted to get back to you.
Okay, yes, back to, okay, so now we're talking process. So, so I, I agree with Mr. Kylie. So I, I think we would be well off maybe the rest of this evening to talk a little bit of process. So, because, to your point, we don't have a, I guess the word is formalized Board of Ed committee or board, right now that will be into the next fiscal year, nor do we have committee officers. So I thought it would be good for us to level set our expectations and our ground rules. Mr. Gerber brought this up last time, and I, I did, I did send an email to you saying that. I, I agree with Mr. Gerber. You know, we, we need to set some kind of guidelines. I don't, I don't know what those guidelines are. But if our guidelines are purely driven on cost, that's a much different discussion than if they're driven on, I don't know, some, you know, some Board of Ed specific school objective, right? So I think that is a discussion that we need to have very, very quickly. A couple of things, and let's start very simply. Materials. Can we please get all materials sent to us prior to the meetings? This would have been nice to have today. All materi, we, Board of Ed, I'm sorry, Board of Finance, we get all our materials beforehand. Normally, stuff that's delivered that night just doesn't even get discussed because you don't. So if we could have board materials early, I would appreciate that. And I want to talk about the webpage. So I just kind of happened to cross the web, the Board of Ed webpage the other day, and it said, hey, you want to send a note to the ad hoc committee? Please fill out this form. And I sent the note to Mr. Dwyer, and I said, awesome. Who's responded so far? I want to see them all. And then tonight, Mr. Dwyer made a comment about, well, if we don't get too many, we'll print them. I make a recommendation, and I don't know if we take a sensitive body, whatever, I, I want to see everyone. We've gone to so great pains here to make sure we've got all these entities covered here. I really don't want to miss anyone's comments from the public. Budget season, we get, I bet we get thousands of emails, you know as, as well as I do, so do our Board of, my Board of Ed friends. I, I think, again, we can leave it up to the committee here, I think we should see absolutely all of them. I really don't want them summarized for me. That's, that's just me. And since this is the first time we're together as a committee, because last time we were like, you know, there were a bunch of people missing, I think it would be interesting to know who, what we're all here for, who we're representing. So if we could do that real quickly, that would be helpful for me.
Okay, I only, I only remind you that none of you are here representing another body. The other body suggested your name as a good person to serve on this committee, but you serve as an individual citizen of Fairfield.
Got it. So my name is Chris DeWitt, and I was, I'm a good guy as far as the Board of Finance is concerned. And I am, I live at 289 Davis Road, and I'm, I'm representing...
We, we gave introductions at the la, at the first meeting. Does the committee wish to reintroduce yourselves?
So we're, we're not representing anything? I'm not here representing Board of Finance? I'm, I thought that was...
I'm gravely mistaken on that.
I, I am too. You are representing yourself. You have been suggested from the Board of Finance to get their perspective and their experience of people who typically serve on a Board of Finance, but it's not like you go back to the Board of Finance and say, okay, here's the question that came up, so have the Board of Finance tell you how to vote. Each person is here to represent...
I, I have to disagree with that.
Citizens.
That contradicts what you said when you originally announced this committee.
Correct.
I don't believe it does.
You specifically said that you wanted members of the Board of Finance, RTM, Board of Ed.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen. So why would you select people from those bodies if you didn't want them representing them and giving feedback to those bodies?
And that's what I voted on.
That's what I voted on. I voted against. Sorry, with all due respect, that clearly contradicts...
And, and just this evening, I hear that there's now an application process out to the general public, which I don't understand.
Can I add something?
The at-large.
I, I will not represent the Fairfield Education Association. I can't possibly represent 960 teachers.
And we were told that there...
We were told and requested by Mr. Smoller that there be an FEA rep on the board, on the committee, and we don't have that.
No, Mr. Smoller did not ask that. I suggested that there should be at least two staff people because it's, and for those on the Board of Ed may remember, when I said, we ought to have two staff people on so that we don't have a citizen committee making recommendations that the staff have to implement, and there aren't any voices from the staff as to whether that makes sense enough.
Well, I distinctly remember Mr. Smoller getting up in front, and I, I'm sad that he left just a few minutes ago, because I wanted to ask him, because it, it seems as that they wanted representation. I understand what Mr. Sahagian is saying. How do you, how does one person represent, you know, all those teachers? But it, I don't know, I guess I was misled.
Well, so Mr. Sahagian, did you fill out an application?
I will, Mr. DeWitt.
Sorry.
Kind of like the kind of protocol, right? I'll take a little exception to the idea of misled. Because I asked different boards to suggest an individual so that we might get that perspective of Selectmen or RTM or Board of Finance or staff or other perspectives is not the same as suggesting they represent that entity. I apologize if you made that assumption, but I only said that we wanted that perspective, not that they were representing. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to Mr. Sahagian. So did you fill out an application? I heard about an application process today. Did you fill out an application to be on this board? Because I know I didn't.
Through the chair, okay.
Sorry, I, I did say through the chair, didn't I?
For those who were recommended directly from an entity...
What entity?
The Board of Finance in your case.
Right.
I did not require an application.
Got it.
For the at-large positions, we are using the application process that the first Selectmen's office typically uses when putting people on a citizen committee for a building committee or something like that. So because we got several people, we thought a consistent, I thought, a consistent set of information on everybody, because I, I got short, one-sentence emails, and I got resumes. So I wanted to get a consistent set for the at-large people.
So with the exception of Mr. Kylie and myself, everyone else filled out an application?
Okay.
It's a pretty yes or no question.
No, because Mr. Gerber obviously did not, because he came from the RTM.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'll, I'll include Mr. Gerber in my question. So except for Mr. Kylie, myself and Mr. Gerber, everyone else has filled out an application to be on this committee?
No, because that also accepts Mr. Sahagian, who was recommended by the FEA.
So you were recommended by the FEA, but you're not representing the FEA?
And when people sent me emails, as somebody did, I was very clear with them that they are not representing that body. They come from that body with a certain perspective that serving on that body creates. Other questions that you have, Mr. DeWitt, on process?
I, I don't think so.
Okay. Any other questions that people have on process? Ms. Pitko?
So can you just clarify who exactly will be on the committee? Because I see a, a name, I'm sorry, I can't read it from here. I see Stephen. Did he represent another town body? Did he come from somewhere else? Do we have other members that are going to be joining us? We're talking about, what I wrote was 51 different items here, plus seven we added, but we don't have our full committee. And I understand you said it would happen after elections, but I'm very confused on who's on this committee, who's representing. What I voted for, and we can go back to the minutes, was that we purposely extended an invitation to other town bodies and other representatives so that instead of having a, a subcommittee like policy that we have on Board of Ed, we were extending it to the public, and then we don't have public comment tonight. I'm very, very confused. I need you to spell this out for me.
I don't know that I can restate what I've already stated, that everybody that you look at is the, this committee is on the committee. Mr. Giglio, as was mentioned when we adopted the commission statement, we wanted somebody from the non-certified staff. He is the recommended person for that. He did not make the first meeting, he did not make the second meeting, and so I'm actually going to be in conversation to see whether it is his intent to participate, and if not, then we'll replace him.
So do we have any other town bodies joining us after the November elections?
Uh, no.
Well, Republican RTM.
I'm sorry, thank you for that reminder. We, we did invite both the Democratic Caucus and the Republican Caucus of the RTM to suggest a name. The Republican Caucus wanted to defer until after the election, so I may or may not hear from the Republican Caucus after the November 7th election. Mr. Asom.
Ms. Trubuco, who do you represent?
I'm an at-large.
Okay.
I'm an at-large member.
Okay.
And, what does that mean?
Okay.
I was asked if I would...
So not, not the PTAC? No, just, okay. So if I'm correct in what you said, that the representatives from the different town bodies, these two members here that are kind enough to volunteer their time, so did you, just out of curiosity, back to Mr. DeWitt, for, for procedure here, did you both have to fill out a process or an application like you do with the first Selectmen to become on the committee like I did when I originally joined the building committee for Holland Hill before I was on the board?
No.
No?
Mr. Sahagian did not.
Okay, and you didn't either.
No.
Okay. And I'm not questioning you being here or anything, I just, I want clarity.
Although you didn't ask if I'm representing the pension fund, the pension board.
Are you?
I mean, I'm not representing the pension board.
So I would, I would say that if, just as we're being clear here, so, so Board of Finance is not represented, RTM is not represented, they, they have put forth someone to give perspective.
Yes.
Okay, so let's get them to fill out an application, too, and so we just follow the, the procedure, because I think if we're going to do that, because what we're saying is we have a, a panel, a, a committee of citizens, not elected officials, which I thought we were getting. So I just think it's important for, as, I can't remember if it was Mr. Kylie or Mr. Gerber said, for consistency, or somebody said, for consistency, I think it's important. And I'm not going to beat the horse anymore.
The commission statement that the board passed was very clear with going for people who came from different perspectives, and we named them, and then we said, and we'll put some at-large members on the committee as well. Anything else on process that, that the committee members want to ask or that board members want to talk about? Ms. Carnell?
I guess I just want to clarify something. The committee is being made up between 12 and 15 members?
Yes.
Okay. How many members do we have so far?
We actually only have 11, because the 12th was going to be the Republican nominee from the RTM, but they deferred till after the election.
So that would be the 12th?
That would be the 12th, and then three at-large people would make it 15.
Okay, so there'll be three more at-large people joining?
The commission statement says 12 to 15.
Right.
So, yes, three would be the maximum that could join.
Because I thought we had also discussed maybe having a teacher on the committee or even a student, so that everybody was...
Yeah, we do have two students.
Right, but are they on the committee?
Yes, they're on the committee.
Then that would be more than 15.
That includes the...
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yep. Anybody else have a question or board members want to make a comment that would be of help to the committee? Ms. Pitko?
I'm going to go back to what I was originally going to say. So in our last meeting, which wasn't televised, after we had a conversation, I said, the first charge is really to make suggestions so that we can meet January budget. And there's 58 items on our list right now, and with new members coming on in November, and we have to revisit all of this and decide which one we want, I'm a little concerned what focus we're going to have to pick those and be able to meet a January deadline. That's just, if we can open that up to how we're going to do that, would make me feel better.
I don't want to do all the talking. I believe that this committee's real purpose is to best, bend the cost curve for the Fairfield Public School Systems in the long term. If the early discussions in November, December, January meetings produce a set of ideas that ought to be considered in the, looking at the 18, 19 budget, from my perspective, that's, that's great. But the real purpose in my mind of the committee is the midterm and long-term cost structure of the school district. That's just my own personal opinion. I know that some committee members have, Mr. DeWitt, I think, was also among that group that said, we really want something for the next budget year. But that, that's the committee's, the committee is free to say, let's take November and December and January and focus only on next year's budget and have that discussion. That's really up to the committee.
Can I just...
Please do.
This is why I'm getting a little confused, because I said that at the last meeting, and then you said you agreed with me, that we should look at what we can do for operational affections for January. So now I'm confused at overall where we should be starting in November with new members.
I don't know how to answer that, other than that's up to the committee to decide. Do they want to focus their initial attention on the next year's budget, or do they want to say, let's come up with some ideas, but really the focus is on midterm and long term? That's really up to the committee to decide that. Mr. Asom?
At the next meeting, is that when the chair, vice chair, everybody will be elected?
Yes, the next meeting, all three Board of Ed members who on a permanent basis will be on this committee will, the first item of business in November will be for those three board members. It's not a committee decision. It's, the, the commission statement says, the chair shall come from among and be voted on by the three Board of Ed members, which is true of how we deal with all of our committees. The Policy Committee votes its own chair from within the Board of Ed membership.
Okay.
So the answer is yes at the November meeting.
Okay, so there's not one technically now? Like, that hasn't happened yet?
I am providing interim leadership until the November election.
Okay, so the committee will be, in theory, will be formed? Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somewhere around November 8th, once I know what, how everybody has turned out in the election, I'll be chatting with people as to, Mr. Asom, as you know, replacing you, because you and I have had that conversation, and replacing myself, because I've had that conversation with myself. Ms. Pitko, as I announced at the last meeting, is the only permanent member of this committee at the moment.
Okay, so will the current members of the committee that are on here now have any input on the additional members coming on?
No.
No? Okay.
Our Board of Ed bylaws, I'm sorry to be so blunt about it...
I understand, I understand.
Our Board of Ed bylaws places the responsibility for appointment to committees with the chair of the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything last? Mr. DeWitt?
I guess just a quick comment. And I don't know if there's been any Board of Ed discussions, but I mean, I, I know Mr. Asom's position of not wanting to be, I know, on the committee, and I know Ms. Pitko does, but I, I think it would be ill-advised to put a brand-new Board of Ed person on this committee. So if, if the existing board members that aren't running for office, you know, and, and I understand, who's running? If they're, boy, if they would be willing to sign up for this, I, I think that would be, I think that would be wonderful and timely, because it's bad enough coming onto a board like the Board of Ed or Board of Finance the first month, forget the first month, forget the first year, right? And trying to get around that in your head and then dealing with this. So just as a thought for the Board of Ed leadership.
For the chair.
For the chair, yes.
Correct. And I've also thought of the benefit that may come with putting a Board of Ed member on who is new that doesn't know not to ask a question, and they're willing to ask fresh questions. So, so I think there's pluses and minuses, and believe it or not, there are some existing board members who have their assignments already like up to here and may not really, either for family reasons or business reasons or personal reasons, say, yes, I'm on the board now, but I'm not really available to sit on the board. So, so there's, there's... So, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this question. Anything else? The written communications, the ones that we received, were put at the table, or were they sent?
Emailed.
They were emailed, and I'm, because of the hour, I might suggest that, that as part of the process, at each meeting, you've received them, and it would be up to an individual committee member to decide, "Oh, there's a point here that was brought up, and I'd like to bring it forward to the committee." And that's up to each committee member whether to do that or not, but that at least you'll have gotten them. I do understand Mr. DeWitt's question, because I think one year we did get almost 1,000 emails on a particular budget cycle. Mr. DeWitt may want his email box to be filled with 1,000 emails, but maybe other committee members may not. And so I think the committee does have to discuss how they want to deal with that in terms of whether there's volume or not. And really, that's up to the committee as a whole to decide.
Okay. I'll just make another statement. Your comment about, "Well, if you want to see them all, just come to Central Office." I'm usually working when Central Office is open, so that's not an option for me. And I frankly, I don't know why any board, any committee member wouldn't want to see all of the comments coming in, but again, we can have the discussion.
Yep.
And one of my, or my email was shared as a, as a content that you were just discussing, and I would like just to bring up one thing. I erroneously called you the FEA representative, Mr. Sahagian, I apologize for that. But it would be interesting for me to know, as a educator, and I know you said you did query other educators in coming up with the recommendations, who those educators are by name?
Sure.
Anything, yeah.
Can I interrupt, if I can, Mr. Sahagian, through the chair? No member of this committee is required to talk about who they might have consulted with in order to understand and/or formulate an opinion. Our students do not have to identify that they talked to their parents about an idea to get clarification. You are not required to identify the members of the Board of Finance, maybe in a caucus meeting that you might have talked to in discussing an idea. No committee member is required to divulge. If they think it is helpful in advancing their argument, for, I've talked to the following people, and I think their opinion is worth it, you, as an individual, may easily be, may want to do that, but no member of this committee is required to divulge names.
Is that a Board of Ed rule? Since this committee, you're not chair of this committee.
I'll say it this way, I don't know of any state law that requires it.
Then I'm making a request.
That's to the committee. I mean, it's not the Board of Ed that decides that. The only thing that's, that you are bound by is the commission, committee commission. If within the committee, the committee wants to make that as a requirement, then that's the committee's choice.
I'll bring that up with the committee chair next meeting. I'll tell you right now, any input that I solicit from people, I'd be more than willing to share that, those names, as long as they're comfortable with that, so.
Anything else? If not, Ms. Carnell, do you have any final comments on this agenda item and other that you want to quickly make?
Well, I wish everybody on the committee a lot of good luck, I guess.
See you, good luck.
So I guess I did have a few words. I don't know if everybody knows, but tonight is my last board meeting. So I did prepare a few words, and I'm not sure who put the flowers...
If I might ask, please, for the audience to come to order, Ms. Carnell.
Okay. I'm going to start over. Whoever shared these flowers with me and the mug, I really appreciate it, so thank you, and I know there's a note, which I will get to. So I guess what I'd like to say is, in the blink of an eye, the four years have passed since I've been on the board, and I've had a lot of opportunities during the time that I was on the board to interact with many people who have many different interests, concerns, and wants for the district. Some who I was in agreement with, some who I was sometimes in agreement with, and some who I was never in agreement with. For that, I am grateful that I received a master's in conflict resolution. However, if I had known then what I know now, I definitely would have gone on for my PhD. They say the most important item a board member can do is to pick a new superintendent for the district. The process was long and intense, and after many hours working together, the board voted to bring in Dr. Jones to our district. When I had my first meeting with Dr. Jones, she asked me why I wanted to join the board. After I answered, I asked her how many Board of Ed meetings she watched prior to joining us. She said, "Many," and I smiled and said, "And you still showed up." So unfortunately, I hope you remember that conversation. Unfortunately, I have only had a short time to work with you, Dr. Jones, and the team that you have assembled, but I know the district is in good hands and moving in an excellent direction. To my fellow board members and the town, the items that came before us were not always easy to decide which way to vote, but I always tried to make my decisions where the children would benefit. As adults, we must realize that our future lies in the hands of the children. Therefore, we must always be willing to educate them, challenge them, and listen to them. I want to thank everybody for a most interesting, turbulent, and wonderful four years.
Thank you very much. So with no further business before us, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Carnell, all in favor, please raise your hand. Now, the minutes will be both approved by the Board of Ed, and eventually the ad hoc committee. There'll be one set of minutes for this joint meeting. Thank you.